Okay, um, hello, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting the Urbana City Council, the whole committee of the whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
And you need to make sure that you unmute Phyllis. You're just, if you look at the bottom left-hand corner, there's a microphone. There you go.
Okay. Sharice, it looks like there's not quite a quorum there yet. So you might want to wait a few minutes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I was looking to see.
I think we do have a quorum.
I only see two others other than Sharice. Who else is there?
Bill, Dennis, and Mary Alice and Jared.
Oh, okay. All right. Here we go. Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Is Bill not here? Okay, I guess not. All right, moving on, we have a quorum.
Okay.
Okay. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the meeting minutes.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Remove approval of the minutes has been approved by Mary Alice and seconded by Bill Colbert. Are there any additions or corrections? I would like to make one addition, or at least change. Can I do that?
No, you can't.
Okay. Lori Pearson asked that we be able to move the resolution number 2020-07-033R to be one of the first, the first things that we vote on when we get to the staff, well, the ordinances and such. And I didn't think that that would be a problem. It'd probably be more time efficient. Or is anybody want to make a motion on making that change?
We did vote on the approval of the minutes, though, did we? We need to have a roll call vote.
Oh, that's right, we do, don't we? We didn't have a roll call vote on the approval minutes. I'm so sorry. Let's go back to that point of order. Okay.
And Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, sorry, the public, the additions to the agenda or the change in the agenda. And I thought it would, I thought it would be all right to move the resolution to the beginning of our discussions down regarding the ordinances and the resolution. Can I get a motion?
Sure, I'll do that. I would move resolution 2020-07-033R concerning the SNAP double value program forward to be the first item to be discussed when we get to items.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our public input and presentation.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, we do need to vote on that. I always forget to vote. Thank you, Bill. Yeah, we have a voice vote on that, please.
We need a roll call on that.
Roll call vote on that. I'm sorry.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And my apologies, everybody. It's been over four months since I've actually done the committee of the whole meeting, so please be patient with me. And I've never done a Zoom one, so. Moving on to public input. I guess I'll start with voice, people are going to read their stuff, and we're going to keep you at three minutes because we do have several people. And I'm looking for hands raised. Okay, there we go. So I'll start with Alice Ingelbretson, Ingelbretson?
Yeah, yeah, Alice Ingelbretson. I'm at 501 East California. And Dennis told me about this meeting today, and the reason he mentioned it to me is because I've advocated for brick sidewalks for about 25 years now. And I know you're going to be talking about changes to the codes, zoning codes and stuff, whatever it is, I can't remember what you're talking about. But I just want to say that I really feel like we need to put all incentives that we possibly can into preserving the brick sidewalks, especially in East Urbana. So many of us just think it's such an important aesthetic quality. But the other important thing, of course, is safety. And about 25 years ago, when I got involved in all this, I had some brick sidewalks replaced in front of my house, which are pretty rumpled up at the time. We had a lot of community volunteers help. And it's held up so beautifully, and people seem to walk on it a lot because it's easy to walk on. So I'm just here as a citizen saying, you know, let's do everything we can to promote our brick sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Tracy Chong. Tracy?
Hi, yeah, I just got unmuted. I'm Tracy Chong, resident of Urbana, or in the past few weeks also referred to by the city of Urbana as FOIA recurrence requestor number two. Since I've started talking about the crazy fees charged by the city, Mayor Marlin has attempted to paint me in a very bad light in order to justify the hundreds of dollars charged. According to Marlin, I have made many, many, many FOIA requests. No doubt, in the following FOIA presentation today, the city will try to justify the monetary hurdles by claiming that my FOIA requests are such a burden to the city and claim that this has to be done because the number of FOIA requests are increasing each year. The public, myself included, file FOIA requests when we suspect that something is not right, and this often includes misconduct by the police. If the number of FOIA requests Urbana receives is increasing each year, this is a concern, and the right thing to do is to increase transparency and not squash it. Regarding my many, many, many FOIA requests, which Marlin listed in a memo last week, I made three FOIA requests in 2019 because my car was totaled in a hit-and-run by a drunk driver. So I had to get the police reports and follow-up because important details were omitted by UPD during the investigation. In 2020, I made nine FOIA requests and was labeled a recurrent requestor by former city clerk Charlie Smith. This happened within a week of April 11th, when I submitted a request for records related to the beating of Aleah Lewis by Urbana police officers. According to Charlie Smith, I had submitted seven requests within seven days, but this was not true. He assigned a new FOIA number to a follow-up query from a previous FOIA request because I suspected the city did not provide all documents that I had requested. This is a valid concern. They are documented instances where the city has omitted documents and only provided them after much follow-up. Of the other requests, I was referred to the Illinois State Police for one, received no documents for another, even though I narrowed the scope as requested, and was charged for documents related to the police department, the Aleah Lewis incident, the CPRB, and the city's compliance with the Open Meetings Act. I'm also not sure how it is legal for the city to charge for these documents based on megabytes. According to the Illinois FOIA statute and after confirmation with the Public Access Counselor, this method of charging can only be applied to voluminous requests. None of my requests where these charges were applied have been designated as voluminous. The city is making all kinds of excuses for these charges and painting requestors like myself as villains. Way before any of this recurrent requestor charges, Urbana has always made it difficult to get documents and withheld information via other means, like using exemptions incorrectly. The only new thing is that the city has found another method to block transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hayes?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Then, my name is John Hayes. I'm a resident of Champaign, and I'll get to it. City Council, first, let me implore you all to ask Julia Reitz to drop the charges against Aleah Lewis and the 27 protesters who were arrested May 31st. It's a very simple action, one that I have taken, and you can do it too. Her number is, for anyone listening, 217-384-3733. Also, get SROs out of the schools. Concerning the events of April 10, it is abhorrent how the UPD behaved. The actions they took actively escalated the situation. First, while the 911 call described an accidental discharge, nine officers arrived ready for an active shooter situation and escalation. Officer Ruff threatening to shoot the suspects with an assault rifle if they didn't do exactly the right things with their hands was another step towards escalation. I suppose the officers that day simply got themselves excited, and it became reasonable in their minds to dogpile Aleah Lewis, striking her in the head and using painful submission techniques, all because in a moment of extreme duress, she deviated slightly from verbal instructions, instructions given at a large distance, a distance at which words can easily be misheard. Deviation from instructions that psychological stress must have made it difficult or even impossible to comprehend in that moment. Every step of the way, the Urbana police actively escalated the situation that led to the arrest of Aleah. To be more clear, I'm not so naive as to believe that the abhorrent behavior of the UPD was because of undertrained and/or malicious officers. These abhorrent actions are instead the result of all the training police undergo and is corroborated by the UPD's use-of-force policy. Go to their website and read it. It's laughable. What I want is the deep militarizing of UPD. The very presence of an assault rifle April 10 escalated the situation. Get rid of the guns. Let's also talk about pepper spray. The variety used to deter bears has a concentration of about 2% capsaicin. Capsaicin is what makes the spray burn. Police-issued pepper spray has a concentration of up to 30% capsaicin. Do police need a pepper spray that is stronger than what is used to deter a bear attack? Do police need less-than-lethal rounds that are far too often the cause of death or permanent injury? I will never be convinced that these weapons are contributors to safety. They instead point towards escalation of violence. Even when not used, the potential threat a gun represents allow police to behave brutally. The weaponry police have represent an implicit threat to those around them, and yet police cry about wanting to build mutually trusting relationships with the public. From the get-go, a militarized police department will always represent an inequitable relationship with police coming out on top. Disarm the police, defund police, and put that same money towards real community needs. Affordable housing during a pandemic seems imminently recommendable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Megan Donald, McDonald?
Hi, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, all right. Dear Mayor Marlin and the rest of the city council, my name's Megan McDonald, and I'm from Ward 5. Here we are again. Another week has passed by, and you've contributed nothing of substance or impact when it comes to anti-racism work. The community shows up week after week, writing emails, making phone calls, trying to make your jobs easier by presenting you with facts, suggestions, and concerns. Mayor Marlin, you continuously ignore us. You respond more promptly to requests from bars. You respond more promptly about trains humming too loudly in East Urbana. You'll probably respond more quickly to these brick sidewalk concerns. You respond to some people, but not all, via email. You cherry pick during public input. You interrupt people during public input to remind us that you are not for the people, to remind us what and who you do or do not support. You've interrupted two women in the last month to tell them how they were wrong in their statements about you. Does that mean we are to infer or assume that everything else we've said about you is true? So it's true that you did tell the public it was tech issues that hindered public input the other week, when in fact it was your own personal choice to ignore the comments from the community you represent. FOIA'd by Tracy Chong last week. I noticed you didn't hop in to tell her that she was mistaken, but I guess we're noticing how hard you try to make her job. You try to hinder Tracy Chong for her freedom to information, which she only attempts to access to keep you transparent and accountable, which you should welcome. It's true that your cop endorsed, it's proudly displayed on your website. It's true that you voiced frustration with the systems in place that have failed to act in response planning to COVID-19 and the reopening of schools. Imagine how we feel with your failure to act to help save our fellow community members from life-threatening felonies. It's true that you pushed back on the proposed 4% cut from the police budget, bringing it back down to 2%, money that could be going back into social works, affordable housing, or community development. It's true that you've done little to nothing to provide your support and influence in the drop-the-charges campaigns for Aleah Lewis and the 27 protesters from May 31st, who were maced and threatened out on Prospect Avenue. They're innocent until proven guilty, yet still aggressively and violently handled by the police that you're so proud of. Jailed in crowded cells with no bonds posted for 48 hours or more during an international health pandemic. It's true that you cancel city council meetings citing lack of agenda items. Those city council meetings have consistently been going for four hours, week after week. You're just hoping that we just stop showing up. It's true that about, out of the half a dozen protests there have been, you've only shown up to one. Before I continue, I'm going to wait 10 to 15 seconds for you to respond. All right, well, I hope the community hears me today, because obviously this council isn't. Please email JuliaReitz@jrietz@co.champaign.us and urge her to drop the charges, and reach out to me at McDonaldPress@gmail.com and learn how you can personally participate in mutual aid for the victims of police violence and aggression in our community, whether it be to help with food insecurity, loss of income. Yeah, and I look forward to Thursday's panel and watching the community again educate you. Thanks.
Thank you. Then Jocelyn?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. I just wanted, last week, when talking about support for police, Bill Colbert was talking about the silent majority. And that was in the face of unprecedented public engagement and sort of vocalization of sort of the desire to see police budget cut, to see charges dropped against Aleah Lewis, et cetera. And I just want to talk a little bit about sort of the history of the term silent majority. That term was popularized by Richard Nixon during the Vietnam War, when he was suggesting that most people who are not in the streets and therefore were in support of the continued firebombing and loss of life, that was the atrocity that is the Vietnam War, was the Vietnam War. In 2015, then candidate Donald Trump started using the phrase while campaigning and said, won a speech in 2015, "The silent majority is back, and we are going to take our country back." He continued to use that phrase throughout the campaign, sometimes during his presidency, and recently during the protests against police violence and after the murder of George Floyd. When you position yourself on the side of a supposed silent majority, you're in bad company and on the wrong side of history. Leadership in general is about listening to the people and about doing what's right. There are times when it's okay to ignore the masses to stand for the rights of the few. However, this is not that situation. Right now, we are in the midst of what is the largest civil rights movement in history. Millions upon millions have taken part in nationwide and international displays to demand racial justice. And so far, the council has done nothing in terms of meaningful progress to move in that direction. I am grateful that the future of public safety is going to be discussed tonight, and I hope that you heed the voices that have been calling week after week after week after week for justice as we move towards defunding and abolishing the police. Reform like body cameras have been tried and failed decade after decade. We spent an hour and a half last week, all listening collectively to the police say, "Body camera footage is not something that the public gets to see." That's what the whole presentation was. They made a chart about it, and there's very, very specific ways where if you jump through all of the right hoops and are the right person being in that footage, that you can maybe get to see some of it, but it's all heavily redacted. Most of the footage goes to the state's attorney. They get some cops off the hook for things that have been claimed against them, but it's clearly not a tool for police accountability, and further investment in that direction is not a move towards justice. Reform was tried after Ferguson. Reform was tried after the '92 race riots. Reform was tried after the civil rights movement. This is tried decade after decade after decade, and we still see the overrepresentation of black people and other minoritized populations in our jails, in our prisons, and having their lives thrown away. We need to try something else. At $11 million a year, it's worth trying something different when what we're doing is actively unjust. So I really hope that you move towards defunding and abolishing the police instead of further conversations that either try and claim some silent imaginary minority that doesn't think it's worthwhile to weigh in and maybe is on your side versus the claims of the people again and again saying, "We need to be cared for, and it's your job to do that."
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Okay. Concerned Urbana resident, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Hi, my name's Alanna Ackerman. My address is Fairlon Drive in Urbana. So I'm here again. As many people have stated tonight, we are here week after week. We are not here just for fun. We are not here just to quote-quote "stir up trouble." We're showing up week after week because we have questions and because we want answers. So I will ask you my question again. City council members, how can you use your power to get the charges dropped against Aleah Lewis? How can you use your power to get the charges dropped against the 27 protesters, 22 of whom are black? Aleah Lewis has charges brought against her for literally being attacked by a police officer, and the 27 protesters had charges brought against them, felonies, for the simple act of protesting against an anti-black system, against an anti-black society. I can think of nothing more ironic than charging black people with felonies and giving them up to $50,000 bond for protesting an unjust society. There's nothing more ironic. There's nothing more sickening. That's why we're showing up, many of us, week after week with these questions. What can you do with your power to support these people who have suffered injustice? So that's my question for you. And, you know, I've heard other people make comments tonight about wanting answers. I want an answer to my question about what you can do with your power. This is not a rhetorical question. I invite you to respond. I invite you, not just the mayor, every single person on city council. I would like an answer from each one of you. You know, be creative, be imaginative. How can you use your power to support people who have suffered these injustices? And this call is for all community members listening today. We all have the power to call Julia Reitz and demand that she drop these charges. Someone else already read the number. Again, I invite you all to respond. I invite you to answer these questions that are not rhetorical.
Sharice, you need to unmute.
Sorry. I meant to go to Christopher next, but Megan, which, I'm sorry, what's your last name?
Miracle.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm a resident of Champaign.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm calling tonight to once again urge you to take action to get the charges against Aleah Lewis and the 27 protesters dropped. It's disappointing to see such consistent public support from community members, as others have said, while seeing silence from our local representatives. It's also disappointing to hear, in meeting after meeting, the same troublesome rhetoric surrounding the reality of police brutality in our community. You claim that it doesn't happen here while refusing to acknowledge the injustices faced by Ms. Lewis or to acknowledge the memory of K'wan Carrington. Police brutality does happen here, full stop. Further, the claims that this isn't L.A. are undermined by the simple fact that racism is structural and that white supremacy is embedded in our criminal justice system.
Did you speak up? Okay, I can't. Yeah. I don't know if the phone got away from you or something, but.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you a little better, yeah.
Would you like me to start over?
No, just, you know, continue. I just wanted to let you know we couldn't hear you.
Okay. Well, I can follow up with the email about what you missed. So when Bill Colbrook claims that militarization of the police exists to keep police officers safe, he furthers the assumption that police need protecting from the community and glosses over the use of police tools to harm and kill community members, from AR-15s to SWAT teams. To the contrary, a 2018 study found that the use of SWAT teams fails to make police safer, does not deter violent crime, and is disproportionately used against communities of color. While the UPD claims to use assault rifles responsibly, they lack true transparency, as the entire section of their guidelines and responsible use for patrol rifles is redacted. And apparently, these policies allow officers to have assault rifles swing freely over people as shown by Aleah Lewis's assault. Saying that officers need protecting denies the role that they have historically and currently played to escalate violence in the first place. Further, the Illinois eviction moratorium is set to expire soon, even though many community members are still unemployed and recovering from direct and indirect effects of COVID-19, with no way to meet rent payments, much less back payments. Houselessness, particularly in a global pandemic, is a public health issue, and is disproportionately experienced by people of color, LGBTQ+ people, and people with disabilities. 84% of unsheltered people have pre-existing health conditions that put them at increased risk. People who are houseless are more susceptible to police violence and are routinely criminalized. Doing nothing means refusing to intervene when people's lives are on the line. In closing, arguments from the community about where we might place the money we gain from defunding the police aren't just suggestions about where money should be spent. They're clear and research directions that actually address community problems, including houselessness, mental health, domestic abuse, and poverty. The police do nothing to solve or even address these problems, because as an institution, they're designed to criminalize and respond with violence to social problems and to create violence and precarity where it did not exist before. Defund the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Christopher?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Sharice, do you have more than 20 people speaking tonight?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I'll try to make it quick then. My name's Christopher Hansen. I've lived in Urbana for about nearly 20 years now. I want to talk about the issues of public records, and I'll state once again that the FOIA fees that the city is charging, they're a new invention that, you know, residents began seeing after people started looking into the Urbana Police Department. And other public bodies are not doing this. They are not charging $700 to $800 for one records request. And when I call the Illinois Attorney General's office, which I did earlier today, and I'm told that they have never heard of a public body charging fees in the way that Urbana has has just adopted, and that a number of Urbana's new FOIA practices are entirely illegal, that is rather notable. And when Urbana staff get creative about how they assign FOIA numbers and assign up to seven different FOIA numbers to a single request just so that they can call a person a recurrent requester and publicly demonize them, I think that is rather notable. And let's be clear, Urbana staff have violated the FOIA law many, 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 many times. And many of the FOIA numbers assigned by city staff never resulted in the city producing any records because they're denied. And I wonder what the city council was thinking last month when they voted on Kirk Gorman to be the new city FOIA officer. This is a person who used to be a police officer. And trust with the police was already very low, and now you've assigned a retired police officer to handle public records in the wake of the Aliyah Lewis incident. And Kirk Gorman has made every effort to conceal records related to the police department, and now you have reinforced that mistrust. And I think the question that the city council needs to ask is, does the city of Urbana want to have the legacy of being the most secretive governmental body in the state of Illinois? Because that's the direction we're headed. And I think the answer to that question should be resoundingly, no. We should be going in the opposite direction. We should be doing way more than the bare minimum, and we should be trying to maximize access and transparency and access to records in a time when local residents are most concerned with what their government is doing. And when the city's response to that concern is to become as secretive as possible and to shut out concerned residents, and then to publicly villainize efforts by citizens who try to engage their own government, that tells me something is very seriously wrong with the decision-making process of our government officials. And when the city of Urbana publicly espouses transparency as one of its most valued tenants, but at the same time stomps upon the efforts of its residents to access their own government, that is very simply corrupt, and it needs to stop.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Sisneros. Mr. Sisneros.
Hello?
Hello.
Oh, hey, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me the chance to contribute. Yeah, I wanted to provide some comments for the discussion that you'll be having about policing issues. And I wanted to, and I agree with a lot of the things that have been said about asking you to call the district attorney and to advocate for Aliyah Lewis and the other arrested protesters, but I kind of wanted to focus on this discussion that you'll be having. And I guess I wanted to commend you for making space for the discussion and for the steps that the mayor and the council have already taken. But I'm concerned that the council and mayor might become, I guess, satisfied with some of these, what seem to me to be token changes. I'm concerned that, I guess I'm concerned that your conversation today will start with this narrow framework of just kind of working around the edges rather than taking this opportunity to make real change. And I'm also concerned that several of the council members, because of their positions or past experiences, are responding to the community with defensiveness or misunderstanding rather than open and honest accountability to the public. So just to reiterate the problem, the city of Urbana suffers from an over-reliance on policing and overpolicing, and this, like all institutions in our society, is woven through with racism. Policing is our response to too many problems, which not only fails to make our community safer, but actually makes it less safer marginalized or minority members of our community, leading to racial violence, such as that experienced by Aliyah Lewis on Good Friday. As former Dallas Police Chief David Brown said, "We are asking cops to do too much in this country. Every societal failure we put off on cops to solve. Not enough non-to-hold funding, but the cops handle it. Schools fail, let's give it to the cops." Policing was never meant to solve all these problems. And we see this pattern in Urbana, like in all cities. Urbana PD spends just under $1 million a month. Meanwhile, the entire yearly budget for community development is roughly less than $2 million. So every month and a half of police funding is an entire year of community development funding, which itself obviously covers a whole host of things, not just things like substance abuse treatment or housing support. So when, and I think some of the other people mentioned this, but when these points are made at the council meetings, you know, the usual response is, oh, you know, we need to offer more training and support for police to try and solve these problems. More money for de-escalation training, substance abuse education, courses in adolescent psychology. And it seems to me like that old saying, you know, when all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail, except what we're doing is trying to figure out how we can make the hammer of policing more like a screwdriver, you know? Let's add de-escalation training onto it. Let's add substance abuse training rather than just using the right tool in the first place. And so this is, I think, what these calls to defund the police mean. It can sound abstract, but it really is concrete. We're asking the city to take a hard look at the way policing is done in Urbana, to evaluate where our money is going, how that money may be perpetuating problems of racism, of inequality, and to work with the community in a democratic way to transform policing to make it serve the community. And the thing is, there are so many models and recommendations for this right now that it's, that we can't act like this problem is just too big to tackle or just kind of rely on these minuscule symbolic changes. And just one example is a report by the Justice Collaborative, which is this team of legal experts and scholars studying criminal justice, and they recently just released a report that recommends 10 concrete things that cities can do to reduce their over-reliance on policing and to make communities safer. And they're all excellent ideas. I'll send their report to the council. But for example, they provide lots of examples of cities that have created teams of mental health experts and social workers trained in de-escalation as first responders to these situations. They provide examples of communities who've relied, who've replaced police in schools with student safety coaches who specialize in mental health and restorative justice and can build these positive relationships with students and lots of other things. So...
Mr. Sisneros, your time is up, but I really thank you for all that information. I do appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Really, thank you. Ron Kestner? Actually... Mr. Kestner, am I saying your name correctly?
Hi, my name is Ron Kestner. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I live at 1209 West Oregon Street in Urbana, and I'd like to share some thoughts about defunding the police. Defunding the police in favor of a new approach to public safety makes sense from many perspectives, but the most compelling perspective for me is nonviolence. I believe a nonviolent approach to civil authority is the only sustainable governing position we can take. When someone experiences a crisis of poverty, nonviolent intervention is how we want our municipal government to respond. When a family needs help managing a mental health emergency, we want those who arrive to bring peace to the situation through language and treatment. When a couple experiences domestic conflict that threatens to be violent, we want the knock at the door to inspire sobriety and long-term solutions. By contrast, notice that there is no such thing as a nonviolent criminal justice system. Whether the violence is implied or actually used by police officers, jailers, or felony court judges through individual actions or systems of punishment, the result is the same. The state's moral authority is derived from its willingness to do violence. That's a contradiction, notice. Moral authority has no substance if it's projected onto the people by force of arms. The result is that a wartime ethics is now a visible presence in everyday life, propelling a cycle in which we ask more of the police, put more police on the streets, and give them more weapons. A nonviolent approach to civil authority proceeds with an ethic of partnership and thereby has the potential to develop true relationships with people from all walks of life based on values like trust, compassion, and mutual commitment. Even more, a new approach to civil authority based on nonviolence can go where the police, the courts, and the prisons can't. Diffusing the tension before it becomes crisis, addressing the trauma that surrounds emergency, and exposing historical racism and economic injustice to the light of day. Does all this sound like wishful thinking? Any conversation about defunding the police is bound to include uncertainty. Without a willingness to use force, we imagine that the problems would be worse, perhaps catastrophic. This vision of perpetual crisis seems characteristic of wartime ethics. Instead, imagine practitioners of nonviolence who are as well-trained, well-funded, and well-supported by municipal government as the police currently are. That's what I think we are trying to make when we imagine defunding the police. It's a vision that deserves high expectations. But, thank you.
It only can be managed by a city that has resources. Thank you. There's somebody talking. I don't know. Okay.
It's Dennis.
Okay, sorry. Alan Assarad? Oops, sorry.
No, that's okay, Sharice. I'm on, right? You can hear me?
Yeah, you're on. I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. Okay.
So could I at least see the timer as I go, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
As soon as it comes up. Okay.
So I wanted to first revisit the night that Police Chief Seraphin was reappointed by a vote of all but one in favor. And I bring this up not because, you know, immediate municipal needs might have dictated his reappointment, but because only one of you decided to make even a symbolic gesture towards real harm that was done in this community. And that leaves me disappointed. Similarly, any one of you could have personally provided a recommendation to drop the charges against Aliyah Lewis for a police officer losing their temper on April 10th. That has not been done, to the best of my knowledge. I hope to be wrong. The other thing is quite concerning, that we would reappoint a police chief who stated that de-escalation could not be facilitated on April 10th because they believed a gun to be present. It was indicated in the phone call. It's a reasonable belief. But let's just note that they could use that excuse under any circumstance, and that puts a burden, or it actually makes it very, very difficult to ensure that de-escalation would at all be used. We have to demand more from our civil servants. But I want to pivot over to the fact that we are facing an eviction tsunami. The Illinois Housing Development Authority, over their 53-year existence, has helped finance 255,000 homes. They have conservatively estimated 500,000 homes in Illinois facing evictions, almost double who they have helped in their 53-year history. And I want to talk about something that you can do about it because we do not have enough funding for this. We do not have 53 years' worth of funding. We do not have 106 years' worth of funding either. The Chicago mayor, in preemption of the last eviction moratorium expiring, extended the number of days that tenants could not be evicted. Any one of you can ask legal counsel whether such powers exist for the Urbana city government and how that could be realized. I am asking you, I am begging you, to ask your lawyer if you can help. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. And as soon as I can get to it, Sarah Nixon?
Hello? Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
My name is Sarah Nixon. I am an Urbana resident. And I'm speaking tonight to the council to say that if you have been listening to public input for the many past months, or for the many, for the past many months, you will have heard that those who know Aliyah Lewis describe her as an absolutely lovely person, most notably from Danielle Chenoweth. Now, last month, the minister of my church and members of community groups that support Aliyah Lewis and that denounce the unconscionable prosecution against her gathered in front of the Champaign County courthouse on the day that she was scheduled for a pre-trial hearing. I joined that group at the courthouse, and this afforded me the opportunity to meet Ms. Lewis. I spoke with her in person, and I can attest 100% to this fact. She is sober, quiet, gentle, and wise beyond her 21 years. I want to mention another characteristic of Ms. Lewis. Now, not to put a fine point on people's body weight, but you should know that Ms. Lewis is physically tiny, and this isn't obvious from the bystander footage of the assault that she suffered, perhaps partly because she was wearing sweat clothes and perhaps the cops are comparatively short stature. But I literally could have carried her around in a piggyback in front of the courthouse without much effort, and I am not a large woman myself. Now, the reason I highlight this fact, which would otherwise be quite irrelevant, is let's remember that the Urbana police are playing the victim card and claiming that the three officers who attacked her were assaulted by her. And one, I think Officer Cervantes, the one with the longest rap sheet of prior complaints, even alleges that she inflicted on him a broken thumb. Now, if true, if it's true that an officer sustained a broken thumb, it would most likely have been from punching Ms. Lewis. Advocates have been asking to see the medical evidence of this broken thumb, and of course, none has been forthcoming. It will emerge at trial, if it exists, and trial is where Ms. Lewis is courageously determined to take this. So in this context, her size does become relevant. I would estimate that the big bad cop attacker, according to the official narrative, weighs in at around 90 pounds. Now, my research into broken thumbs shows that it is unsurprisingly rare to incur a broken thumb when someone is resisting, sorry, rare to incur a broken thumb from someone resisting your attack or attacking you. Okay? It is, on the other hand, common to suffer a thumb fracture known as Bennetts fracture, and it's the most common thumb injury overall, when you have punched somebody. A Bennetts fracture, and I'm quoting now from a medical source, quote, "usually occurs when there is a force applied upon a flexed metacarpal, such as punching a hard object." And it's most common, quote, "in athletes participating in boxing and other contact sports." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nixon. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? See anybody? Okay. I do have a couple of emails that need to be read. The first one is from Daryl Cruz. Dear Mayor Marlin and City Council Members, during the past 16 years, I have heard different UPD chiefs say that, say they are looking for guidance from the city council regarding the subject of traffic stop racial disparities. There seems to be hesitancy on the part of UPD to act unilaterally. Understandably, the UPD doesn't want to do something the city council or committee or community would not support. As a result, UPD frequently looks to and defers to city council for direction. Sadly, when little guidance is given, little change occurs. It is finally the right time for the city council to lead on this topic. The city council must clearly and explicitly state in a council resolution what expectations and changes they want the UPD to make to reduce traffic stop racial disparities. UPD comm... UPD command leadership would value such clarity. The community would support such a resolution. Therefore, I offer the following draft resolution for your consideration. There are reasons for it, including each and every element. I would be happy, I would be happy to discuss this draft resolution with you or answer any questions you may have. Council could revise it and send it to legal for final editing and wording. However, you must act through the power and clarity of a council resolution to resolve what seems like an intractable problem. I ask that this email and attachment be entered into the record Monday night. I trust that you will read it beforehand, so I'm not asking for it to be read during public comment. I hope Monday night you will discuss the need for a council resolution during the agenda item policing next steps. Thank you again for your service to the community. Respectfully, Darryl Cruz. And then there's a PS of the resolution that he, he sent us. I'm looking for other, okay. Um, this is from, input from Eric Jacobson. Dear Mayor and Council, I am writing to acknowledge a positive experience Naomi and I had when we felt obliged to initiate a call to police a bit more than two weeks ago. A very loud argument had broken out, broken out about half a block from us involving a group of about half a dozen people. From the volume and body language, we feared there was a potential for a breakout into violence. When the police came, they just talked, listened, got everything settled down, and asked the group to disperse. We thanked the, we thanked the officer who called to follow up, but thought we would make the thanks more public. Eric Jacobson. Trying to see if there's any more.
You see the one from Karen Linder, and there's also one more hand raised, Charisse.
Okay, now there's another hand raised. They'll have to wait. Dear Council members, this moment in time, because I can't see the screen right now anyway, this moment in time is the time to stand and do the right thing, see that the state's attorney drops the charges against Aleah Lewis. Please do not sit by and watch the UPD ruin the life of one more person of color. We failed the family of Kwame Carrington. Please do not fail Aleah Lewis. Looking forward, as a community, we need to pour more resources into lifting people of color up. It is imperative to make our budget reflect this by moving more money away from policing and into education, mental health services, and grants especially designed to support Black-owned businesses. We can make a difference, and we can lift people up. Thank you, Karen Linder. And I think that's all that I have.
There's another one from Theodore Johnson. You have that one?
Maybe you should read that one, because I'm not seeing it right now. If you could read that one, Jacob, Jared?
This is from Theodore Johnson. Dear City Council members, I'm writing to ask that you please consider an effort to invest funds toward rectifying racial discrimination and disparities similar to the effort recently undertaken by the Asheville, North Carolina City Council. That effort is covered in this article from USA Today. We hyperlink to the article, Asheville passes reparations for Black residents. And he say, it continues, "Whether an effort like this in Urbana, in Urbana is presented as reparations as it was in Asheville, or simply as a commitment of funds to programs specifically working to end racial discrimination and reduce racial disparities, I think a program like this should be a top priority for the Urbana City Council going forward. Though I know the council is already involved in great many efforts towards ending racism in our community, I think that a program like that in Asheville would give even more focus and rhetorical power to these efforts, and a strong commitment towards ending racial discrimination and disparities in income, policing, incarceration, housing, and education will help increase community faith in public institutions. Thank you so much for all that you do."
Thank you, Jared, and because I still can't find that one. I do have something here from Cheryl Brooks. I am writing to express my frustration with trying to obtain FOIA documents from the city. On May 29th, I made a request consisting of four parts relating to city staff emails and police injuries and complaints. Despite this being my first ever request, Kamahary declared I was a recurrent requester and would be subject to a 21-day business, a 21-business-day response time rather than the standard five. When I asked what all of these supposed requests were, she refused to provide a written response and instead asked for a phone call. This immediately seemed strange to me, as if Kamahary were trying to do something off the record. So I instead submitted another FOIA request to learn about my previous FOIA requests. Again, once again, I was labeled a recurrent requester and had to wait 21 business days for a response. In the meantime, I received a response for my, to my first FOIA request for each of the four parts. I was being charged $20 for a small PDF file, as well as $7.97, $7.97 for a flash drive, a total of $87.97, despite the fact that I requested the information be sent via email. The city is, for some reason, insisting on a physical format of data transfer. This seems especially strange during a pandemic, when Mayor Marlin herself has encouraged everyone to stay home as much as possible and avoid contact with other people. I submitted an email. Mustn't place. I submitted an email to the council during the, during the July 13th meeting, and received a response from Mayor Marlin. You don't meet the threshold of recurrent requester. We will follow up with the clerk's office. Thus far, nothing has come of this promise. Shortly thereafter, I received a response to my request about being a recurrent requester. Once again, I received a charge of $20 for a small PDF file and $7.97 for a flash drive, $27.95, $27.97, sorry, total. This is simply in regards to previous requests I have supposedly made. It has been almost two months since my first request was made, and I still have no documents in hand. The city is seeking $115.94 for some simple information that should be readily accessible to citizens. It seems as if some, anyone at the city does not want to give information, does not, city does not want to give information to will be labeled a recurrent requester in the hope that the extended response times and extraordinary, extraordinary fees will make them simply go away. This is a shameful way to handle the exchange of information that by law should be available to every, everybody. Okay. And Austin Hoffman? If you, you can, you can talk, Austin?
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Austin Hoffman. I'm an Urbana resident in Ward 5, and I'm a proud member of the Graduate Employees Organization, the GEO at UIUC Local 6300. And I'd like to take this opportunity, opportunity, speaking of organized labor, to discuss the role of police unions in enabling extrajudicial murder of civilians and protecting killer cops. Like most labor unions, my union fights for better wages and fair working conditions for my colleagues and I. Police unions do this for their members too, but this is not all that they do. They also bargain over legal representation during prosecutions against police officers with histories of violence and abuse. They bargain over the length of time police are allowed to wait until they give an official statement after incidents of deadly force and brutality. They bargain on restrictions of releasing body cam footage. They provide police with more leeway to shoot or kill someone if they feel, quote-unquote, threatened. These are privileges that go far beyond what a worker like myself or a worker in almost any other sector of labor could reasonably expect. And these are just a few of the reasons that police unions themselves used to be illegal, because local government officials worried about the deadly possibilities of allowing armed agents of the state to collectively bargain. Today, we are seeing the tragic consequences of giving police the power of organized labor. A 2018 University of Oxford study and a 2019 University of Chicago study found direct positive correlations between attainment of collective bargaining rights for police and incidences of police violences, murder, and civilian abuses. I'm happy to provide you with all these sources and many, many more, because I do research for a living. Additionally, many states have what's called a police bill of rights, which is legislation that further protects them from accountability. In Illinois, this includes restrictions and delays during interrogations and gives police unfair access to information recordings to, to officers who are under investigation. Given the history of police units in protecting killer cops and opposing even the most tepid of social reforms, it is all the more concerning that Mayor Marlin proudly touts her endorsements of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 70. Just for reference, the National Fraternal Order of Police endorsed Donald Trump in the 2016 election and will almost certainly do so again. So I hope you're proud of the company you keep, Mayor Marlin. I implore this council to terminate and not renew any and all contracts they have with police unions, which keeps the wallets of police officers fat while many of your constituents struggle with unemployment, lack of accessible housing, and education. The FOP undoubtedly hinders your ability to answer our demand to defund the UPD and divert those resources to things that actually keep our communities safe, which we've provided you abundant examples of over the past three months. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing tangible action from you all on this.
Thank you, Austin. Okay, seeing no other hands raised. And having read at least the emails that I got, are there, is there anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we also have a presentation, a FOIA presentation. Go ahead, Carol.
Okay, great. So I will begin, and I will share my screen. I have a PowerPoint here. Just bear with me. And I will do a few, a few slides and then turn it over to Jim Simon. And just so you all know, we also have Kurt Borman on the line, I believe, if there are questions that, that he can answer as well as we go. So this is a follow-on to a memo that Mayor Marlin had sent to the council on July 10th and has been posted online for folks to see, addressing some questions that had arisen around fees being charged for FOIA, and then also the, some of the, some of the information that's withheld when crafting responses. So this, this is hopefully an explanation of that in a way that the public can digest as well. So FOIA balances three important interests. Of course, the first is transparency, but then there is information that is exempt from disclosure, and then there's also the burden of the response. So those three things are balanced when creating FOIA-producible records. The, this is a, this chart shows the, the trend of FOIA requests in Urbana and, from 2015 until now, and you see that that trend is, is increasing. And in 2019, just to, just to maybe turn the number of requests into something that's a little bit more accessible, in terms of number of requests per workday, that averages 2.8 FOIA requests per workday, and then the, the number that we're on track for this year, the 718, that translates to 2.9 requests per workday. Now, the, the, in responding to FOIA requests, I want folks to know, Jim is going to walk us through the whole process, but you'll see there that there's a number of staff that are identified as participating in the process. At a minimum, at an absolute minimum, we have 2.5 FTEs committed to working on FOIA every day. So we have a half-time person in the clerk's office, we have the FOIA officer, and then we have a full-time person in the police department, and then we have various people. Each department has an individual that's designated to handle FOIA requests for that department, and then from time to time, we loop in other legal folks, and we also call on the IT department sometimes when we're doing complicated searches. So 2.5 FTEs at a minimum is, is on a daily basis, and then sometimes that can double when we're doing a large, a large request and handling lots of different kinds of documents. So now I'm going to turn to Jim and ask him to walk through what exactly happens when we take in a FOIA request.
Thank you, Carol. Hopefully you all can hear me. A lot of people seem to think that responding to FOIA requests is a fairly simple task. Get a request, pull the records, send them out. There are a number of steps that every FOIA request follows. First, the request has to be logged in and assigned a FOIA number. This is typically done at the clerk's office. The request, unless otherwise provided by the statute, requires, as was suggested earlier tonight, within five business days of receipt of the FOIA request. However, the city and requesters can agree on a different timeframe if they so desire. If a FOIA request does not, or is not clear in terms of what searches should be made, what words should be used electronically to search in electronic searches, the city has to develop search terms, often in conjunction with the requester. The FOIA request is then forwarded to the appropriate department or the individual who is likely to hold access to the records. Sometimes upon look by that individual, maybe a quick search to see what we're talking about in terms of volume and accessibility and ease with the search terms locating the records, that person may request an extension. Typically, in voluminous requests, or requests that are perceived as going to be voluminous, that request is made to the Requestor, and again, the city and the Requestor may agree. Same would be true with unduly burdensome requests, which are not necessarily voluminous, but due to the categorical nature of a request, it may be unduly burdensome. If the Requestor refuses to cooperate, which is rare in Urbana, the city has the option of denying the request in certain instances or handling them different. Obviously, the search itself has to be conducted. Hard records may be required to be searched, electronically stored records may be required as well as emails. For every single search term that a FOIA Requestor provides or that the city and the FOIA Requestor clarifies, a separate search must be undertaken. If it turns out that there are three viable search terms, then the exact same search, but with different terms, must be undertaken. For example, if a search has to be made of five staff employee mailbox, email boxes, then each of the three terms will have to be run through each of those mailboxes, being a total of 15 searches. Once the search has been completed and the records been gathered, it is possible that further communication may be required with the Requestor. And as I said in the past, the city, and they continue to do so, we continue to do so, try to cooperate in each step of the way, assuming the requesters are willing to cooperate. So the city may ask that timeframes be shortened, the scope of the request be narrowed, or the number of parts within a request be limited. If fees are likely to be charged in those instances that the statute clearly allows fees to be charged, the city is required to provide the Requestor a reasonable estimate of the fees and a breakdown of the fees. Fees are allowed in certain instances with hard copies, records in non-PDF form, such as video and audio or JPG pictures. as video and audio, or JPEG pictures, or in PDF form, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a couple of minutes. Obviously, the records are compiled, and two copies typically have to be made, at least two. There will be a third copy made in a little bit, because one unredacted version has to be kept, and then the other copy is used to make redactions, if appropriate, and supported by one or more FOIA exemptions. FOIA provides, in Section Seven of FOIA, forty-four different exemptions, and the justification for those exemptions are inherent in the description of the exemption. Section 7.5 provides fifty exemptions. These fifty exemptions are related to statutes, that other statutes that are not FOIA statutes, such as the Body Cam, Officer Body Camera, Worn Body Camera Act. Records are, under that act, in certain circumstances, must be kept confidential. So, the legislature has engrafted that act into Section 7.5 providing exemptions. The city doesn't have a choice where other statutes require exemptions. Records are reviewed for exemptions to see if there's exempt information that should be withheld, or entire records, which is very rare, but it happens on occasion, should be withheld, but the person or persons reviewing the records, depending on the volume, must also identify the exemptions that they are relying on, because that is provided in the response. Typically, it's done, well, I'll tell you when we get to the response, but one of the parts is citing the statute, section of the statute, and often quoting the exemption. The records that have been redacted, the process of redacting itself is not necessarily simple. You have to identify what's redacted, highlight it, make a decision on making that permanent because you can't unredact, and then, at least with the programs we're using, and then, of course, as I said, identify the exemption. Hard copies have to be photocopied. Electronic records have to be downloaded into some medium to provide them to the Requester. We retain, we in the city retain, unredacted copy of all records and a copy of the redacted records. That is because a Requester is advised of his or her right to seek review by the Public Access Bureau in the Attorney General's Office. And often, the Attorney General, or I should say, the Public Access Bureau, will ask for the unredacted records to see if the city was proper in redacting, i.e. was proper in how they employed one or more exemptions. Then, typically, the person or primary person conducting the search has to be coordinated if multiple people are doing the search, but somebody will write a response. A response to a Requester typically provides the FOIA number, provides the date it was received by the city, and then quotes the substantive part of the FOIA, the actual records request. Then, it will indicate whether records are being provided or not. If there are no records that were, that are responsive to the request, it'll state that. If there are, but they aren't being provided, or because redactions have been made to some of them, it'll note that, and then it'll provide the list of exemptions relied on, as I say, citing the statute typically, and either quoting or paraphrasing the exemption itself. After that, the response advises in full, takes from the statute itself, the provision that'll, that provides the right for a Requester to seek review of the city's response. Often, when a responder asks, or excuse me, a Requester asks for review from the Public Access Bureau, the city will be notified, and we will be asked to either provide unredacted records, if it's a question about exemptions, or to explain how we arrived at a particular determination. Voluminous request, burdensome request, recurrent Requestor status, that kind of thing. The next slide provides an example of what is referred to as a multi-part request. The statute uses the word categorically, or categories, multiple categories, seeking different records. Each part, and this one lists five parts, each part has to typically be searched independent of the other parts, using whatever search words might be appropriate. It may be calling for a search of two people's email boxes or files in one instance, and a search of four email boxes, and two people's files in another instance, et cetera. Each search is treated as if it's an independent FOIA request for gathering records only. Any part may qualify as an unduly burdensome request or a voluminous request, and the statute has provisions on how the city can handle those two categories of requests. They are not synonymous. The next slide gives an example of an unduly burdensome request, either by the language, it's overly categorical or general, that it might require searching a huge volume of records in possibly multiple locations. Again, the city tries to cooperate with a Requester to narrow, or at least clarify, an overly broad request, so it isn't overly broad. And far more often than not, requesters are very cooperative with the city, and they arrive at some kind of an agreement on how to proceed, and the city confirms that and then proceeds per the agreement. But for those requesters who refuse to address this kind of an issue, they won't change, the city has the right to, has the right to deny the request under FOIA. The next slide describes what constitutes or how one determines whether a request is a voluminous request. This is not a determination that's made ad hoc by the city. The statute provides very specific metrics on what constitutes and what does not constitute a recurrent request. If a request, excuse me, a voluminous request, if a request contains five, or more than five parts, it is deemed a voluminous request. If a request seeks or likely to generate more than 500 records, whether they're one page or 50 pages, that's a voluminous request. And finally, if a single record among the search, no matter how many records that may be generated, if, if it's going to produce more than 500 pages, then that would be a voluminous request. Needless to say, responding to the voluminous requests are very time-consuming. I'll give you an example. One recent request would, if it was completed, would have generated over 12,000 pages of records that would have to be reviewed. We estimate that it takes, on average, about a minute. Some records take less, some records take more, especially if there are multiple redactions. So if you figure a minute per record, that would come down to over 2,000, or excuse me, 200 hours of staff time to handle that one request. Some requests may have multiple voluminous parts to them. FOIA also provides a very specific metric on determining whether somebody is a recurrent Requester, and there are some exceptions. A recurrent Requestor status arises if there are seven requests in a seven-day period, 15 requests in a 30-day period, or 50 requests in a 12-month period. Once an individual has been identified as a recurrent Requester, that status remains with the individual for one year, and it can be a rolling year. Let me give you an example. If an individual submits seven requests during a week, one each day, that person is classified a recurrent Requester. If that person then goes on to submit five more each the next day, five days, the one year period, or the determination of further recurrent Requestor status is made by looking at the last request and counting backwards. Thus, in my hypothetical, the one-year classification would be extended for five days. There's been a lot of discussion on how do we count a request? If a request comes in that has five, or six parts, or two, that's considered one request. The parts are not counted. As I indicated, FOIA provides the city with some relief if a request has more than five parts, but it's not, it does not deal with determining whether someone's a recurrent Requester. It, as I indicated, indicates that the person, or that the request is voluminous. And by voluminous, that means the city is given 21 days in which to respond, rather than five. So contrary to what some people have suggested, if one request has multiple parts, it is considered a single request. Of course, as I said before, any part of a recurrent Requestor's multi-part request could include a voluminous or a burdensome request. In recent times, two individuals have qualified as recurrent Requestors, and the city so advised, and you heard several people speak about that tonight, and others speaking about that other nights. Those two individuals brought their concern by a request for review before the Public Access Bureau. In one instance, the Public Access Bureau agreed with the city, and unless something has come in in the last hour or two, the PAC, or Public Access Bureau, has not made a determination regarding the second individual. So apparently, they are still kicking that one around. Needless to say, they are swamped with all kinds of requests for reviews throughout the state. To my understanding, though, that individual has since gone on to clearly qualify as a recurrent Requester. As the discussion, let me go back to this table. These two individuals, since sometime towards the end of 2018, you can tell that by where it says "count" in the table. Number one, 2018 F-670, that's a FOIA number that is in consecutive order for that year. That's how we assign numbers, the year, the F for FOIA, and then consecutive numbers. So obviously, this is one towards the end of the year. I don't recall how many FOIA, total FOIAs were submitted in 2018, but this one is towards the end. So in a little over a year and a half, two individuals have submitted 57 separate FOIA requests. Those FOIA, some of those FOIA requests have had 88 different parts, whether it's one part in a request, or three or four. The requests, not the parts, the requests of the total FOIA submitted during this period, this little over one and a half years, represent 13% of all FOIA requesters. FOIA authorizes public bodies to charge requesters fees in certain prescribed instances. We do not make up the fee amounts. The statute not only, if fees are to be charged, the statute requires the city to provide what is called an accounting for those fees, i.e. exactly how those fees are to be charged. If any Requester asks for hard copy records, they get the first 50 free, and after that, a public body can charge up to 15 cents per page, starting with the 51st page. For color or odd-sized copies, such as, you know, these large blueprints that require special machines to copy, the, a public body can charge its actual cost. So if, let's say, somebody requests blueprints, assuming blueprints are still called blueprints, and they have to be sent out because the city doesn't have that kind of equipment, the city can charge for the cost of the vendor to reproduce those large documents, or odd-sized documents. Unfortunately, the statute does not provide a metric other than the actual cost incurred by the city, which does not include staff time. Two types of electronic records productions are provided for in FOIA. First is the non-PDF form. This relates to records that are in a format other than PDF, obviously, it could be video, it could be audio, it could be pictures in JPEG or some other format. A municipal, or a unit of government can charge up to $20 for up to 20 megabytes, $40 for, excuse me, two megabytes, $40 for two to four megabytes, and $100 for more than four megabytes. Electronic records in PDF form can be charged by a public body, $20 up to 80 megabytes, $40 for 80 to 160 megabytes, and $100 for more than 160 megabytes. The city is also authorized by statute to charge for the particular medium onto which the records are downloaded. We do, where it is feasible, we will email PDF records. So there's no medium charge for that. But often, we have to use a thumb drive, and so we have to purchase the thumb drives, and we are allowed to recoup those out-of-pocket expenses, or any other medium. It may be a CD, or a DVD, or if it's a sufficiently large one, some kind of other large-capacity media. Now, a Requester can request either a waiver of fees or a reduction in fees. However, the Requester must state or describe the specific reason for making such a request. It cannot be something such as, "I would like to reduce, have the fee reduced," or "waive," because this request is in the public interest. The Requester may state how and why it is in the public interest. And something in the public interest means something regarding health, safety, welfare, or legal rights of the general public, not a particular individual or subset of individuals. And it must be specific. And the Requester must indicate an intent to disseminate the records, not the Requester's summary, or commentary, or op-ed interest in the records, but the records themselves as they are. Who will use the information? How will it be used? That is required, and the city has the right to determine, in the case of a reduction in fees, how much fees should be reduced. Finally, FOIA provides numerous bases for exempting information from production. I mentioned the 44 exemptions in Section Seven and the 50 in Section 7.5. This next slide lists a number of the typical exemptions that the city often invokes. There's one on here, oh, nope, it's on here, excuse me. Individual, personal, or private information. Home address exempt. Personal cellphone number, driver's license number, social security number, credit cards, personal email addresses, health information, information about family members, personnel information. Non-work-related communications are deemed personal or private and are, or can be exempt. And the city chooses to protect the right of privacy in those types of situations over the need of the Requester to have that information. That doesn't mean anything about an individual can't be FOIA'd, as requesters As requesters know, they get lots of information about people in the city. Shared law enforcement information in certain situations in a shared database. And Urbana Police Department uses a number of shared databases, such as Leeds, which is a statewide database, the FBI database, which is a national database, and ARMS, which is in the midst of changes now. But that's a local, more local, you know, Champaign County, maybe a little wider, database. Pending investigations. That information is redacted because to release it could compromise the investigation and the individual's right to a fair trial. Law enforcement tactical information, i.e., how the police handle certain situations or gather information. Disclosing tactical approaches would hamper legitimate investigations. Body cam video pursuant to the Law Enforcement Officer Body-Worn Camera Act, that information is exempt. Preliminary drafts of documents are exempt. The final documents are not. Bid submissions are exempt until the contract is awarded. If a vendor or somebody that deals with the city provides a trade secret or confidential information or proprietary information, and it's labeled as such, that is exempt. The city does not challenge or go into, "Is it really trade secret or confidential, et cetera?" Because we don't have the basis for doing that. Minutes of closed meetings. They are exempt until the council decides to release them to the public. Employee grievances. Grievances arise in the context of union contracts. And employee disciplinary actions are exempt. Purchases and sale of real estate, purchased by the city, sold by the city, are, the information's exempt. Typically, it shows up in the form of discussions and closed meetings, but it's exempt until the sale has been completed. Information gathered pursuant to the Cannabis Registration and Tax Act is exempt. Again, that's like the body cam statute. That's a statutory exemption that falls under 7.5. Library circulation records, those are exempt. Certain sales tax information the city receives from the state under confidential agreement is exempt. In closing, the city makes a good-faith effort to conduct searches and provide records consistent with the FOIA statute. We try as much as we can to work with requesters so we can provide them the information they truly want. And in talking with a number of people who have handled communications with the PAC, and I've handled a number myself, and have had direct communications with a number of PAC officers. Urbana has a good reputation with the PAC. That's the Public Access Bureau. It used to be called the Public Access Counselor, and that's how the name PAC arose. But the city has a good reputation for trying to act fairly in how it handles and responds to FOIA requests. Yes, on rare occasion, a particular exemption or something like that may be overturned. Every municipality experiences that. But based on what I have, my research, over 90% of the FOIA requests submitted, and I've not read every one and every PAC response, but I perceive that as anecdotal information from people who, various people who, including myself, looking at the material I've received, have received from the Public Access Bureau. Over 90% of the time, the city has been sustained in how it invokes exemptions and how it addresses FOIAs.
Okay, thanks, Jim. I think we're ready now to answer any questions that the council has.
Um, I just, I have one question. Can I ask a question? I guess the one question, the statute that you were talking about, Jim, with the two megabytes and the 160 megabytes, you know, the, yeah, the PDFs and the non-PDFs. I guess my question is basically, when did they write the statute?
I don't have a date, but it goes back a number of decades. It's been amended a number of times as well. Our charging fees is not new. The clerk has advised me, city clerk has advised me, that going back to at least 1993, we have been charging fees. Now, most of the fees charged relate to hard copies. The 51st and more pages of hard copies. Only recently have the requests, and when I mean recently, in the last three or four years or so, maybe a little longer than that, have the requests generated large volumes. And not every request does, but some requests generate large volumes of electronic records, whether in non-PDF form or PDF form. Obviously, the computer age allows us to store more electronically. We do much more of that than we do in paper. And then, of course, the proliferation of email. And I forget who told me, but there are approximately, I think it was Sanford, told me there are over 230 email accounts in the city.
Okay, and so when, if a person requests that they get something through their email, video-wise or PDF-wise, is that attempted first?
Yes, in fact, the statute requires us to, if possible, reasonably possible, to provide the records in the format requested. For example, if a请求 asks to come and see the records, we have to make an accommodation to set up a place to view the records. I don't think that's happening right now with COVID. But we have to provide a place to review the records. And then somebody has to remain with the records to make sure they don't leave. And if somebody wants, if the请求 wants a copy of a couple of the records, we make the copies. And if it's under 50 pages, they're not charged anything. So yes, we will. And as I said, PDFs, I don't know how easy it is to send out full videos, a picture or two maybe, but we try. We try to provide them in the format they request. Can't always be done. 1,200 pages of electronic records, not easily emailed.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I guess that's it. Thank you, Carol.
You have a couple folks, Charisse.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I can't see everybody. Hold on. My bad. Ah, Mary Alice.
I'm, since we're talking about charges, I thought I would ask first. Prior to charging an individual, is an estimate given to the individual?
Absolutely. Not only is an estimate given to the individual, effort is made to make it as accurate an estimate as possible. And not only that, and it's a written estimate, it must provide the means for calculating the estimate, all the components that go into it. For example, if it's electronic records and they have to be downloaded onto, let's say, a DVD, and I don't know how many cents we charge for a DVD or a CD, because we have to buy them, city has to buy them, it will be broken down by megabyte, number of megabytes into the three categories, and as well as the amount for the medium. I noticed that Kurt Borman temporarily lit up his light, so he wants to provide more information on that.
I was just gonna say, Jim is absolutely correct. We have to be very specific in terms of the type of, the type of format, and whether it's in PDF or non-PDF, and the size, and the type of media we're using to put the record on.
Is the city considered looking into something like Dropbox or Box or some other kind of service in which electronic files can be put in to lower the cost to individuals?
I'm not aware of that. That would be an IT question. I'm not aware of that. But we certainly can ask IT about that and maybe kick it around.
Okay, I think that that might help alleviate some of the burden. And then, in terms of publishing the FOIA requests, is there a way, I don't know if there's any law, in terms of whether or not FOIA requests can be just published to a website or something, in terms of what the answers are?
The FOIA statute does not prohibit governments, local governments, units of governments, from providing information about FOIA requests. University of Illinois does it. And a number of other municipalities I've encountered over time do it. And the information varies. It could be something as simple as a FOIA request number, the name of the请求, and when the FOIA request came in. Others, it's much more elaborate, depending on the time and the money the government has to spend. It can be the request number, the name of the请求, the date the FOIA request came in, the date the FOIA request went out. It could be an indication whether the PAC or whether the FOIA请求 sought review by the PAC and whether the PAC issued its opinion. And then some of those items can be click boxes for each FOIA request number. And then access can be gained to the FOIA request, the city's response, the appeal to the PAC, and then the PAC's response.
Let me just interject here real quick. Mary Alice, we're actually exploring what kind of information, without creating a big burden on staff, what can we put on the Open Data Portal to share about the FOIA requests that we're processing?
Bottom line, bottom line is there is no exemption that applies for FOIA requests, and the response is there too.
Okay, and then would you mind going back to the slide that you had listed, the FOIA number, the request, the parts, the count, et cetera? I have a question about that.
Say which slide again, I'm sorry.
I don't know what the number is, but it's the one with the table, with the count, the FOIA number, the请求, the parts.
It's almost at the end, Carol. You're coming up, there it is.
Twelve, it's number 12.
Oh, number 12, sorry.
So this is, I just want to make sure I understand this. The parts are, let's say that I, I'm sorry. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, but Carol, can you hear me?
Yes.
You're showing slide for Section 7 and 7.5 exemptions somehow.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay, as I understand this, when you were talking about the parts, if somebody submits a FOIA request, and there's three different things. What's the budget of the planning commission, the planning budget? What's the number of, I'm just making stuff up, grants awarded, and who are the people that received it? So I'm just gonna pretend those are three different parts. What is, hopefully, that's right. So the count is just the number of times that that individual has submitted something. It has nothing to do with the number of pages that go with those parts. Is that right?
No, no. As you will see in the table, there is a column headed "parts." The first column, it says "count," and it's 1 through 57. And some of those, for example, the very first one had three parts. I don't know who the请求 is or even what was requested, but FOIA 2018 F-670 had three parts. That was counted as a single request. Has nothing to do with how many documents our records might be produced. That's immaterial for determining recurrent请求 status. The number of parts is immaterial. As you will see, there are 57 separate requests. But in terms of item, you know, the category search, use the language of the statute, the category search, there are 88 categories, because some of these, as you see, especially towards the end, you see the last four, 54, 55, 56, 57, there's a five-parter, a five-parter, a four-parter, and a five-parter.
Okay, well, I'm happy to hear that you guys are discussing how to make the information more public in terms of the Open Data Portal. And I'd also strongly encourage the city investing some funds into some kind of delivery system, electronic delivery system. I don't think the cost would be that high, and I think it would help everybody. Thank you.
Dennis?
Sorry, I had to unmute. Yes, thanks, Mary Alice. I was gonna ask also about the use of a Dropbox as a delivery item for submitting the data back to the请求. Then my question is also that if we place FOIA information, even if it's redacted, that's been requested by an individual into electronic email, is that considered secure? And does the city have any concerns about the security of emails for this kind of particular information as a FOIA request?
When we email a PDF with redactions, to my understanding, they can't be undone. You can't eliminate the redaction to disclose the information. That was explained to me by IT staff. And in fact, the process is you highlight the PDF using, I think it's Adobe Pro, I think it's called, I've got it on my system. You highlight the record, and it indicates, you know, that it's been highlighted. And you go through, and then you, at the end, you can go back and look at these and decide whether, in fact, you want to make the redaction permanent. And it will give you a warning that says, "Once you make that particular redact," you could do it all at once or go back and do them one at a time. But once you make that redaction, you get a warning first that, at least on my system, you get a warning first that says, "Once you make it, you can't undo it."
So the file is saved separately as a redacted file, and it's not the original file?
Yes.
All right. So then, I guess the other point that I'm gonna mention is that I think we ought to explore reduction of fees where possible to make it reasonable for people to make requests without becoming super burdensome. I see that some of the fees are statutory, others are not. And I think the city could examine why we're duplicating what is considered to be, you know, I guess, by a lot of people, high fees for what they feel are more simple requests. However, the examples, I thought it was extremely helpful to us for you to actually give examples of requests that have come in the past to see, so we can see that some of them indeed are written very vaguely or have extremely broad requests with multiple parts. And then it would be interesting to see a semi-complicated request where you actually highlight and number the parts that you have to consider in breaking it down, and why a simple request ends up having 18 parts.
It can arise in two ways. We have a slide, and maybe we went over it a little too fast. We have a slide, I think the first slide where we start talking about particular examples of requests was a multi-part request. And if I'm not mistaken, it had five or six parts to it. That's one way a request can have multiple, there you go, Carol. Multiple parts, yeah, this one had, this example had five.
Oh, I see, so the numbers, 1 through 5, those are the parts that that got broken down into.
Right, those are the parts. Now, let's say in Part 1, there might be, let's see, it says, "During city council meeting May 11, Mayor Marlin mentioned a city meeting attended by herself, Chief Seraphin, and a number of people." Well, to the extent we have access to some of those or most of those, well, I'll say some of them, email addresses, because that's typically the records we find, we'd have to do a search of the mayor's email, Chief Seraphin's email, and Vassilia's email, Joel's email. So those searches for that one request, we have to search. So those searches for that one request, we have to search all of these people's names. We'd have to search their own names and Minnie Person, Pearson, excuse me, Carol Spindell, Tracy Parsons, et cetera, et cetera. Each one of those is a pass through an email box. So that gets separate from being multi-parted. That one could be a voluminous or burdensome request.
Because you have to do all these separate scans of individual emails from different staff members, and each one is basically another part to the request?
Yeah, it's a component. It's, the request, this one, as I say, had five requests. But the first one requires a, you know, a number of separate searches using these various, you know, names who are not, you know, employees of the city, and searching each of the employees who are named there, each of their email boxes. First one would be Minnie Person for.
Right, I understand that. So these then would become multiple requests within the first request. Is that correct? And they would add up to the the reason why a person would become voluminous in their requesting?
No. This, this request, as you see it here, was counted as a single request.
All right.
Now, and I don't know what, you know, I haven't read the answer or the city's response to this particular request. But it is entirely possible that whoever prepared the response to this request, and maybe Kurt knows who prepared it, and if he prepared it, he could provide you a little more detail. But he may have responded that this part one is either unduly burdensome and/or voluminous.
Okay.
And so that would be handled. So the number of parts, the number of searches that a part requires, all of that is not considered when counting whether somebody's a recurrent Requestor. This one that you see here, with all the different things that have to be done to fulfill it, is considered a single request.
Well, I guess that's, I guess I'm clear about it. But it, but it could still be labeled voluminous.
It could be labeled what?
Voluminous.
Yes. Number one could be. We'd have to go through, you and I would have to go through all five.
Right.
For example, number four, all of Charlie Smyce's emails from between that date range. Yeah, it's half of March and half of May and all of April. But depending on how many emails, that could maybe generate 6,000 records. I don't know how much of an emailer Charlie was. But I know he sent a lot of emails within, to staff in the city. The outside, I don't know.
So a Requestor, they would be smarter to be very specific and pinpoint really what they really want to know rather than cast a wide net?
Logically, I agree 100% with you. But I have to admit, Requestors may not really know how or may not be accustomed to recognizing how to organize a, a data search, an electronic search anyway, to get to exactly what they're looking for. And they tend to, like a lot of people, they tend to cover the waterfront. So, you know, on the off chance, nothing gets missed. I should tell you, the PAC imposes on us the duty of a reasonable effort to search. We cannot be guarantors that every single record that might somehow possibly relate to the request, a particular ask, request is going to be found. I mean, we got millions of records in the city. We do have our data portal. And if it's open in the open portal available to the public, we don't produce any records, and we don't charge for producing no records. We simply give them the link to where they can find the records online.
Thanks, Jim.
Jared? Jared?
Yeah, I got you, Therese. Um, so I sent an email to Jim, Carol, Diane, and Council asking, in large part, what our philosophical standing is on transparency. Does anybody care to respond to that before I get into my questions?
Well, I'd be happy to to attempt to address it in, in the sense that I think that there was an implication, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that by charging for certain FOIA responses, that that is antithetical to transparency. And I would say that we don't think of it that way. That may be just our perspective, but I want to, I want to share that perspective and maybe expand on it. And that is that I think that when the FOIA law was written, it acknowledged that, and as I, as I started off in the beginning, FOIA balances three important interests. And one of those is the burden against transparency and against these exemptions that are permitted. And so the two types of requests that are the ones that, that folks get charged for are the voluminous requests and then the recurrent Requestors. And those both track back to volume. It could be frequency, and you accumulate volume through frequency, or just a single request is voluminous. And notwithstanding that there may be easier ways for us to deliver that information to people through a Dropbox or so, so on, there is a, there is a, there is an incredible amount of staff time that is spent processing that information for the, for the redactions and so forth. And so.
Carol, let me stop you right there because that's, that's, that's the essence of what I'm asking. When you and everyone else alludes to the incredible amount of staff time, you know, we choose to spend our staff time on certain things. That's what we do with the public's money. That's how we decide to run a municipal body. Mike, you're getting right at my question.
And I, and I actually haven't finished my point yet. So if I could do that, then I'd be happy to entertain whatever response you want to give me. But the point is, is that we value many things in this community, and transparency can be one, and we can still charge for it. So I'll give you some examples. We charge for a whole variety, we have a whole variety of fees that we charge for licenses. So we charge liquor license fees. But we very much value those establishments in our community. But that doesn't mean that we don't charge fees. And those fees are intended to reflect the staff time that is spent processing those things. We charge for building permits. We very much want new construction in Urbana. But we charge for the building permits because it takes a lot of staff time to process those. So there is, there is a lot of information that we provide because FOIA requires it, that we provide it at no charge. And we do, and we, and we do that, and we're staffed for that and so forth. But when we have the opportunity, because of this volume issue, to charge, it's, it's in the same vein as the many fees that we charge for all variety of things that we very much value in the city.
Okay. I'll take your, take your point on that. I just, I guess that I wouldn't conflate a liquor license with providing public documents as being the same thing. That, I understand the idea of what you're getting at, that it both costs staff time, but I, I don't see them as the same. Dan, I'll see you raise your hand.
Diane?
Have you finished, Jared?
I mean, I have, but I want to hear what your response is.
Well, I, I am responding to the question about transparency. And absolutely, we value transparency. I think that's reflected in the, number one. And you asked about investment in transparency. We invest in people to respond to requests, for example, to the FOIA requests. The estimate that there's two and a half to three times FT devoted to that is, is probably low, depending on the week or the types of requests that come in. Secondly, we have the Open Data Portal on our website, which is, which is a vast trove of information that other cities may or may not supply. Our financial information is, is out there for everyone to see. Just about everything that people want to see can be found at the City of Urbana. So, so the transparency issue, I think, is very clear, if you will. And the, the issue of charging for FOIAs is, remember, it's related to very, very few, very, very high-volume requests which do involve a whole lot of time. Most people get their requests with very low charge or no charge at all. And the other thing, we will, our, if you, I can circulate to city council anyway, what we're looking at in terms of adding more transparency, at least to the types of FOIA requests that come in. I'll, I'll send you a link to the U of I system where they list all the FOIA requests that have been made, what has been requested. And then the U of I also includes the cover letter that is sent to the Requestor. So I think that's something that we can do. We're exploring at least a way to do that.
Okay. Jim, I got a couple of questions that'll get into some of the meat of this. Would you agree, Jim, that between section seven and section 7.5, there's a difference between a mandatory exemption and an electable exemption?
Yes, because section seven provides, uses the word "may." Section 7.5 uses the, refers to the, really, the language of the particular statute that's listed there. As I say, there are 50 or 49 statutes and a catch-all for new statutes that the legislature has yet to add when they get around to amending FOIA. However, I think it is, it would be a very good exercise if, in terms of whether the city should invoke those, those section seven exemptions or not, for you to read them. You will see why almost every community that I have spoken to, you know, attorneys in communities that I have spoken to about this. And I meet them at various, not recently, of course, but various legal continuing education sessions. And there is almost always a FOIA update component in those sessions. And I go, was going to, three, at least three a year. And there was always a FOIA component and a person from the Public Access Bureau. And I would go up to them all the time to talk with them, to kick around the issues that you all are exploring. And they have told me that Urbana is doing what almost every other community is doing, in charging fees or how we analyze an exemption or apply it. Most people, I don't think, for instance, would want their credit card information, their social security information distributed. Other things would hamper, as I said, investigations. People deserve a fair trial. The police department deserves to keep resource, you know, confidential witnesses, anonymous witnesses confidential.
Jim, I, I got you. And I spent the better part of my afternoon reading through those things. So I understand that there are things in there that do make sense. And I understand the, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page about "may" and "shall be" in those two, in those two sections.
Yes.
So here, here's what I'm, here's what I'm getting at with that.
One other point, though.
Okay.
"May" and the "shall." The issue is the "may." The "shall" one, section 75, section 7.5, we have no choice. Because that's what the statute referred to. So let's. That, your concern is about the "may." There are a number of Public Access Bureau opinions that are published and are available online in the Attorney General's office that delineate a number, many of these exemptions. And so when we make a decision to invoke an exemption, we're just not relying on the words in the exemption, but how it's been interpreted in court as well as by the staff that does this on a regular basis. Approximately 80% of all FOIA requests relate to police records. And Tony Wecht, our FOIA person in police, that's virtually all he does and has been doing it for years, and he knows these exemptions well. Anyone who, any staff member has a question about an exemption, we'll call legal. And one of us will, you know, indicate to that person, yes, that's, that's exempted. Because we have to address it if the PAC raises a question. And our responses to the PAC when they ask about that, we cite cases and statutes and their own opinions back at one another and all to arrive at however they make their determination. So it's, it's not just reading the statute itself. There's a lot more that goes into it, and people trained in this or and experienced in this area are necessary to do it. We just can't bring somebody off the street to start invoking exemptions.
Understood. Because of the elected or electable nature of the language in that, is it within the city's purview to pass, for example, an ordinance or resolution about which of those things we as a city and as elected officials find to be worthy and unworthy to be allowed to be exemptions? Because what, the way that I hear this is that FOIA request comes in, and there's an opportunity, depending on the content of that request, for the city to respond in a certain way about how it wants to do that. Now, I know that city council is not necessarily in the business of deciding every little thing that every city staff person does. And that's not our role in how things go down. But in certain things, it is, and in certain ways, we have, do have a lot of say in a small detail of something to that effect. So I'm curious, because this is what it sounds like to me, is that that comes in, it gets decided out by city staff almost purely, if it applies, what happens with it? And it doesn't ever, in the course of its life, get to become a part of the public body in, in any real sense. And so back to my question, is, would it would be within the city's purview to pass resolution ordinance directing city staff on which of those things we find to be worthwhile exemptions and which things we think we should bypass and allow that information to escape?
I'm going to ask Kurt to chime in on that. But before I do, when you, when, and I will give a caution here. Assuming that the council can do that, because I, I'll be honest, I've not researched whether there's a home rule preemption provision in FOIA. But I can assure you, if there was, every community would preempt themselves out of FOIA. Home rule preemption. But on more of a legal policy basis, when you, when somebody, whether it's the council or somebody else tries to micromanage, let's say, in response to the public's desire to know sources and methods of how the police conduct, you know, investigations to prevent crime or find suspects, yeah, everyone would want to know that. But my guess is, and I've never been a police officer, and so it's hard for me to fully understand the hypothetical. But as, if I were, my guess would be, a police officer wouldn't want those means and methods to be disclosed to the general public because they wouldn't be able to do their job. And there are all kinds of these kinds of things. Another example, let's say you wanted that personal addresses so the community could communicate or pick it in front of my house, let's say. So, hey, FOIA, give me Jim Simon's home address. That's personal and private information. I guarantee you, if that happened, I would be in court in about eight minutes to prevent that. And if I was too late to prevent it, I'd be seeking hefty damages. Do we want to open ourselves on an item-by-item basis for that? I just toss that out. Kurt may chime in on the more technical aspects of can we override an exemption? We don't apply them haphazardly. I can tell you that. A lot of thought, a lot of them are very simple. Let's be, be honest. Your credit card information. Your credit card information, you don't want on the street, and somebody else having that information, there's really no public interest in your credit card, so it's withheld. Other information such as if you're, as a council member, you get a stipend or a perdiem, that's, that's available to the public. Why? Public funds are used to pay my salary, your perdiem, those kinds of things. So we make, even though it's personal to you, we don't withhold. So very careful review of these things is undertaken on a case-by-case basis.
Kurt, did you have thoughts on the feasibility of our ability to say what we can and cannot, or what we would not as a city?
Well, even as a home rule community, we have to abide by the FOIA law. The, the General Assembly has created this as a statewide system for all public bodies, so we have very limited ability to, to contradict anything that's in, in FOIA.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about contradictions. Just talking about Section 7 and that we may elect to invoke exemptions and what our ability is to, to write something that says, okay, well, the city says that these, you know, exemptions 1, 3, 17, and 35 are ones that we are not going to support writing exemptions for, we will release that information whenever FOIA requester requests it. Can we do that?
Well, I would say that we, we can do that, but I would also point out two things. First of all, there's a reason why information is exempt. For example, there's a deliberative process exemption in FOIA that says that when staff members are, are going back and forth and, and discussing a policy or something like that, that these internal discussions among staff may be withheld. And there's, there's a rationale to, to every exemption that's in the FOIA law. And so the, so I'm just saying, yes, you, all right. The second thing I would point out is that staff members can't just randomly decide what, what they're going to withhold and what they're not, because remember now that the Attorney General's Office is the umpire in this, in this situation, that anyone who is given a record where certain information has been redacted because of an exemption, any, anyone has a right to go to the, to the Public Access Counselor and say, well, you know, they, they, they took, you know, the last two paragraphs, they, they redacted the last two paragraphs in this record, I can't see that. And a Public Access Counselor asks, what requires the city to justify every single exemption? And if the Public Access Counselor disagrees with any exemption, then they rule that the city should not have redacted the information, and we have to disclose that. So whatever you decide, I just want you to remember, there is, there is an independent body that is looking at, at, at the decisions that the various people who are redacting records make.
Sure, and I appreciate that. I, I need to do some more research into the Public Access Counselor Office and, you know, what, what they're, what they're all about, because, you know, it certainly sounds like they are in the philosophical arena of, err, on the side of caution, whenever possible, don't release if you don't have to, and I feel like that's kind of the position the city has taken, and that's why I'm asking these questions, because it doesn't sound to me like we go through a process of really trying to do the absolute most to release what we can. You know, it sounds more like I get a request, and I start immediately looking for reasons why I shouldn't have to fill that request, whether it's voluminous, whether it's unduly burdensome, whether it meets an exemption, any of those things. All I've heard this entire time from our city staff is, hey, here are all the reasons why we're justified in telling people that we don't need to give them the information that they want. And I haven't heard very much about us saying, well, here's all the ways in which we care about trying to get that information to them, and here's all the ways in which we're going to go out of our way to do that. We're going to do whatever is the minimum amount necessary, and whenever possible, we're going to refuse to give people the information they want, because, I don't know, I guess it's just annoying that people want to know things, and I just, I don't, I, I don't get it. So, you know, I, my, my, you know, my, my questions outside of those, and that's what was in my, what was in my email, is that it's, it sounds like it's a, to me, this is just a, an attitude problem on, on behalf of the city, not wanting to do, not wanting to do that. I appreciate your response, all stuff.
Jared, can I respond to that? I have done, you know, on and off, I'm not a lead FOIA person, I'm asked questions about exemptions periodically, and I can tell you, with the people in the city who I have worked with on FOIA, by far, the predominant view is to provide records unless there is a reason not to, i.e. reason being harm done, not gee, this is a pain in the butt to do and all. Some requests, the people who are generating in the last two years, three years, who are generating the voluminous requests, the unduly burdensome requests, are basically the same people. And this is a fairly, and this is not just in Urbana, many municipalities have the same kinds of requests and issues being requested, and the complexity has grown, and the volume of information has grown, but as I, as you, as we said, in roughly, if we're getting seven hundred requests a year in the last two years, that's fourteen hundred requests, correct? In which case, a few people have been providing very complex requests. The vast number of requests are probably fairly routine. We don't go out, in my experience with city staff, we do not go out of our way to try to figure out a way of not producing records. If they fall within an exemption, there are times we do produce it if there's no harm that's going to be created. There are times, we weigh this, looking at the law, PAC opinions, and the statute, and we apply it. We're, and I will tell you, the Public Access Bureau has a reputation for doing what they can to protect the requester, and we have a remarkable positivity rate, i.e. sustaining our determinations on redactions, talk about transparency, and that's what you're focusing on. We have very, very few where a response is, you know, overturned wholesale. There may be fifty, hundred redactions in records in a response, and the PAC may focus on one or two and say, no, you overinterpreted the exemption on these two, please produce the record with the information unredacted.
Okay. Another, another thing, another way to think about it. Seven hundred requests, how many do we fill?
I, I, I don't have the exact number, but my guess is, we, when you say fill, respond to the document, you mean with document?
No, I mean, like, they actually got what they asked for.
I would have to, Kurt probably knows more than I do, because I don't handle that many of them, and, but Kurt's new to this. I would say, my guess is probably ninety percent.
Can we get those, those figures?
What we can get is if we're authorized to search, we can go back two years and look at the requests and look at the responses.
I think that the raw data might be what we can show in the responses that we want to publish and ma, and make public, but as Jim was pointing out earlier, some, you know, an, an individual FOIA request can have multiple parts, and the multiple parts can have different answers. So I think, I think it gets a little bit difficult to just go, you know, seven hundred, it's, it's seven hundred times the number of component parts, and then each of those has a, has its own response. So, I mean, we can start by publishing the information, and then the calculus part will have to come as, as time allows.
Well, it, it could be something, Carol, as simple as not fulfilled, partly fulfilled, fully fulfilled. Doesn't necessarily need to be the exact specific number of each component of each request, that would be great, but even just that big picture look of, you know, we partly fulfilled fifty percent, we fully fulfilled twenty-five percent, and we didn't complete any twenty-five. And I guess there's also denials, because we also deny requests from people, so we need to see that category, too.
The simplest and quickest way to get that information to somebody is pick a time period, pull all the requests that we have, pull all the responses we have, and pull all the PAC, binding PAC, or the PAC opinions, whether they're binding or not, that we have, because not everyone files a PAC request for review, and then you can make a determination. If, if we have two hundred redactions and the PAC says five of them are no good, how do you categorize that as not producing what they want?
That's not, yeah, what, what you're talking about, Jim, is not what Jared is talking about. Jared wants to know, did the person get what they wanted, not were we justified in withholding it?
No, 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 I know that, but what I'm saying is, is where if the PAC, you know, what I'm saying is, is by looking at this, you can see what they got. I mean, the, our response tells them what they got, because if it, if, if it, if we withheld anything, either a record or an exemption or a redaction, the response should say, we, you know, please note there may be some redactions, the information was withheld pursuant to one or more of the following exemptions. Well, if that last part's not there, then they got a hundred percent of what they asked for, assuming we understood what they were asking for, and they cooperated if we didn't.
Well, and, and I would also interject that sometimes, sometimes people ask for something that does not exist.
Yes.
So, I mean, I, I don't know how much staff time this will take, we'll take a, we'll take a pass at it and, and, and see what we can come up with.
Or maybe, you know, it's much smaller period than a year.
Well, okay, I'm gonna, I just have one more, one, one more idea I wanted to share. So the other point that was kind of made in that, in that presentation is that we don't have many recurrent requesters, correct?
Correct.
The vast, vast majority are not recurrent requesters. The vast majority are not recurrent requesters. Or voluminous requests.
Since I have been, you know, voluminous requests and recurrent requesters are completely different things.
I know.
Different definitions. In terms of recurrent requesters, to my knowledge, since I've been here, which is a little over seven and a half years, we've only, and it's only been the last year or so, we've only had two people who have been classified as recurrent requesters. I don't know the Cheryl Brooks situation, I think Kurt could address that, because that was raised tonight, and all, but to my knowledge, there have been two people that have been truly classified as recurrent requesters. Just because the requests they submitted.
Okay, well, this is what I'm, this is what I'm getting at. Here's what I'm, you know, trying to figure out how the public body can be useful and assist in these sorts of things, because, again, we're talking about a situation where, you know, we're only talking about this now because it's become an issue, and it hasn't been a priority. Otherwise, we would have been, learned a whole lot more about FOIA. I don't know that I was taught much about anything about FOIA since I've been on council, and I've been educated about a lot of things, and I've only had to learn about this stuff because of this issue. So that, one speaks to, when you say transparency is a priority, I don't see a lot of information on the city's website explaining the stuff that we're talking about, same way as I don't see UPD policies about body cameras on the city's website, trying to explain to our citizens what our process is, what's going on. So when a current请求 happens, it gets dealt with behind closed doors with city, legal, whoever, and we don't find out about it unless somebody makes a stink about it to us. Another way that I feel like, so ultimately, the decision on how to deal with that recurrent 请求 becomes a city staff problem and not a city council problem and not a public body problem.
What role would you have the city council play in that, given that the, the definition of recurrent请求 is embodied in the FOIA statute? What role would the council have in that?
So here, here's, here's what I'm proposing, is that if you were going to have a recurrent 请求, or you do have a recurrent请求, what you could do is you could come to council and say, look, we've got somebody who has asked us for X gazillion number of things, this is how much staff time it's going to take to fulfill this request, here's the things they want to know, here's the reasons why we don't think we should tell them the things that they want to know, do we have your blessing to turn them down? Should we pursue any of these particular ones? Do you think that it's valuable as the public body to release that information to the, to this individual? Here's their stated intentions, so on and so forth. Lay that out to us, let us at least have a say in where that decision goes, and it doesn't all occur in city staff, we don't know about it until somebody's making a stink about it and calling us out in public on it, where we are completely powerless to the situation and have no idea what's, what's going on.
I'm, I'm not su, go, the mayor wants to speak.
I think it's important to clarify, we don't have a choice about responding to a recurrent请求. We do have to respond, just the way we respond to every other请求. The law gives us extra time to do so when they reach that threshold, so it's instead of five business days, it's, is it twenty-one business days?
Yes.
So it's not a question of do we respond, it is how much time we have to respond, and whether we recoup some of the public resources consumed in doing that response. So whether or not, the, the response really isn't different at all. It's how much time we get to do it and whether we can recoup some of the costs associated with it.
And as was said before, the person that's been determined to be a recurrent请求 can take that to the Public Access Bureau and ask if that was a fair or proper determination on the part of the city. As I said, two people have done that. The Public Access Bureau has responded to one and said, yes, that was, in two different ways of counting, that was a proper determination. The other one, Public Access Bureau has yet to determine, and obviously, we'll see what they say, and we'll abide by what they say. So there's always this right, as Carol called it, a right of appeal. They have an independent body who is more disposed and supportive of requesters than they are of, you know, government entities.
Okay. All, all in all, what is the total sum of charges that we've levied against these recurrent requesters? Do you have that?
I don't know that number. The statute-
Is it tens of thousands of dollars?
I don't know. I don't know what it is, because I don't tally the numbers.
Okay.
Kurt might know offhand, but, and I'll defer to him on that.
Just the other perspective point on this is that, you know, we've, we, we squabble over certain amounts of money on council when it's being spent on certain things, and sometimes it's over a ridiculously small amount of money, that, you know, we're spending a lot of time, you know, trying to make a thing be a certain way for reasons that just befuddle me sometimes, and, you know, if the ultimate fees of fulfilling these requests, which doesn't seem to be very much money, is five thousand dollars, maybe, pretty sure we could probably cover it and not charge them for that stuff just because we can, because we want to stick it to them, and tell them, we don't like that you asked for so many records, and that we have to spend a lot of staff time dealing, dealing with these records, so we're gonna make- So we're going to make this burdens, you want to talk about, unduly burdensome fees on a regular person instead of city where we have thirty-five whatever million dollars budget, but we want to make a stink about less than a thousand bucks to this individual.
I think you're forgetting about what, what, um, about the slide that, that, um, Jim talked about the, the fact that anybody who is being charged a fee can request a waiver or a reduction, and there's a process for doing that. And that, and in doing that, that offsets, that, that they have the, um, the opportunity to make their case for why what they're, uh, what they're seeking this information for, um, is in the public interest and that it will be disseminated in some, in some way to the public. And so, um, to my knowledge, we haven't had any such requests, but it's not that there's no, it's not that there's no relief available. And it's not that city staff is interested in sticking it to anybody any more than any other fee that we charge someone.
Okay. Well, I still think they're, uh, they're not, not, uh, a one-to-one comparison between a liquor license and, uh, an issue of public records documents. I don't, I don't agree with that, uh, that presumption at all. But I understand that they have the waiver. And if they have the waiver, you know, perhaps they pursue it. They're supposed to state, uh, what is it in the, it's in the public interest?
They have to provide, they have to provide detail insofar as how it's in the public interest. And the statute defines public interest as public health, safety, welfare, or legal rights of the general public. Saying just that is not, doesn't, doesn't get you, under the statute, uh, a waiver or a reduction in fees. They have, the requestor would have to be specific. And all, and then the information has to be disseminated. The intent is to disseminate the information. Typically, if you read the section six C, six perency of FOIA, it has more of a flavor for news media, really, real news media. And, and the Public Access Bureau has a definition of what constitutes, uh, a legitimate, uh, news media and all. But there's a flavor of that, not just the, I'll give you an example. A request for somebody's personnel records. Should that be made public? And if it's voluminous, well, it would probably would be exempted. And we've had a request like that. Or somebody's entire emails for a fairly decent date range. I mean, what is the public interest in somebody's, unless it's fraud or embezzlement or something like that? What's the interest in somebody's public disciplinary record? Or just their general, give me all the emails that so-and-so sent out between these dates.
Who, who determines what's in the public interest? When you get it back, do you decide what it is, Jim?
We haven't had anything come to us, so, you know, we haven't even set up any process for determining that.
Well, it's, okay, well, I guess we probably, probably should. And this is also another point of who determines what's in the public's interest? Shouldn't the public body decide what's in the public's interest? Not private, uh, individuals working for the city?
Um, you know what, if, if we're going to have this kind of a debate, can, let me say something. Everybody is not as moral as you, maybe, Jared. So when you talk about somebody's information, whether or not it's in the public interest and so on and so forth, and you don't know what that may be used for. And in this day and age nowadays, um, you know, there are people that just make up stuff about folks and use, uh, public information to back up things that, that they just make up about people. And so when, I think when Jim is talking about harm, I don't think he's just talking about harm in terms of bodily harm. You, you know, people's, uh, character can be harmed. People's relatives, their families can be harmed behind somebody using information that in a, in a negative way. So, yeah, public interest, maybe, you know, we can say who determines, who determines what's that going to be? But not everyone, you know, is looking for the, um, you know, most people look for dirt. They're not looking for, to give you a pat on the back. So, I, I think that's something when we talk about harm as well, is something that you have to, you have to think about. How, if, if it's going to have a negative effect on not just the person who's, who's, who you might be trying to get dirt on, but, you know, is it going to affect their, their families? Is this something that could possibly have a negative effect on their health, on their, on them, on their body? You know, only folks, everyone has a, a, a saturation point for bullshit. So I think that that's something that we need to think about.
I don't, I don't disagree, Charisse, but who, who, what I'm talking about is who gets to make that determination?
Well, unfortunately, the person who's being investigated or FOIA'd is not one of those people. So I think that people have to use basic common sense, which doesn't seem to exist nowadays, uh, regarding what is going to be, who is going to make that determination? We don't seem to have, we don't, that, that's the, on a general scale, and I'm not trying to paint everybody with the same brush, but I'm also, I'm, also I get your point. But I also want, you know, you, you should be mindful of, of how incredibly cruel people seem to be nowadays.
I'm, I'm fully aware. I've been the subject of that cruelty as of recently because of the positions I've taken on the police. And I have my personal information right there on the city website. Anybody can call my phone number. Anybody can email me. That's my, that's my cell phone number. And I accept that responsibility because I know that I'm in a public position and that I'm being recorded and that I'm on TV right now, somewhere where people can watch me.
Okay, and so am I. But what I'm saying is that I'm, I also, you know, when, I'm not trying to make this a personal thing. I'm trying to, I'm trying to see the big picture. And the big picture is that there, there are other people who may not, you know, want that information, that certain information out. And that's great for you. You know, that's what you choose, that's great.
Well, it should be, on a philosophical basis, who determines what is in the public interest is not something that should be determined by private individuals. And whether city staff like it or not, they are private individuals. They are not elected representatives. They're not part of a democratic body.
But it goes both ways, right?
I, I don't understand what you mean it goes both ways.
What I'm saying is that they're, you know, the, uh, I don't think anybody wants all of their information laid out for everybody to always see. I don't think anybody wants that, whether you're an elected official or you're just John, John Q. Public.
Okay. Well, then that's why I'm saying, we have a democratic body. We have an elected body. We pass votes, we have majorities, we have minorities, we have discussions. This is something that when there is a question of something and whether or not releasing that information is in the interest of the public, that should come through an elected public body and not be decided by individuals.
Everyone in the city, we should have to take a vote as to whether or not somebody's information can be put out or something?
We're here for-
You're saying that we should make that determination? Or I'm just trying to understand-
Yes, yes, I'm saying city council should, that's what I'm saying, Charisse.
But that's not what the statute says. I'm sorry, Mary Alice?
Um, I'm, I'm wondering, so I think, I think Jared's concern is that people who are unelected are, are making a determination in terms of whether or not a person's appeal to a decision would be, um, made by somebody who doesn't represent them. So my question is, is can, can that, can a person who gets, who raises that appeal, if they get denied, what is their recourse? Do they have the ability to, um, appeal that decision to-
They can, they can seek a review of that determination before the PAC. And the PAC tends to be more pro-requestor than government.
So, so the two things I'm hearing you, uh, talk about in terms of the appeal process and PAC's determination are, A, whether or not something was granted, if a FOIA request was submitted and the city made the determination that it was, um, undue, undue burdensome, or they redacted certain items from it, then they could appeal that to PAC. The second thing that I'm hearing is that if they request for a reduction in fees and they lay out their case in terms of whether or not, um, whether or not the city's determination in terms of in the public good, right? If they don't like, if they don't agree with that determination, then that can be appealed to PAC. I'm just trying to figure out where the appeal process works.
Anything, to my understanding and reading the appeals portion of the statute, if I'm not mistaken, it's section nine. The requestor can appeal the response. Whatever is in the response. If the response, if the requestor has asked for a waiver and the response has a part in it that, uh, grants not a waiver, but a reduction in fees, and they feel there should be more fees, you know, more reduction made, or feel that the, uh, fee should be waived, and they feel they have sustained their burden uh, under the statute of demonstrating that something is in the public interest. They have, you know, whatever's in that response, they have a right to take it, ask for a review by the PAC, yes. And they have far more expertise than the city council and, at this point, staff. Cause we've not been confronted with a request yet. I'm sure we will within the next day or two.
Is, um, is that request, uh, is that ever reviewed by the mayor in terms of looking at what the staff's recommendations are?
No, as far as I know, no. I've never shared a, a draft response. Uh, I don't know if the mayor wants to be buried with seven hundred responses.
Let me rephrase, I'm sorry. So if somebody wants to appeal the cost, the amount, um, and they, uh, they fill out a request to, that the, their request is in the public good, um, would that be the determination after legal reviews the, the request? Would that be something that the mayor would then look at?
I will tell you, I, I don't have an answer, cause we have never been requested, that's not been, that request has not been made. But I, I will tell you what my gut reaction would be. I have to see a request, is I would probably talk with Carol and with the mayor about it. Because they are more attuned, uh, the mayor being an elected official and Carol dealing with you all far more frequently than I do, they would be more attuned to providing guidance on that than me or some staff person further down the chain. Uh, I think Kurt may have lit his light again, so he may have some thoughts on it. But we've not been confronted with it yet, that I know.
Kurt, you got something to say?
No, I, I would just say I agree with Jim, uh, that, that really hasn't been an issue. The, the whole idea of fees, we've been charging fees for decades, but generally that's for, for example, commercial requestors, that, that sort of thing. The, the idea of the voluminous and the recurrent quester, that's relatively new experience for the city.
Okay, Dennis?
Yes, um, earlier, uh, Jared was bringing up the question about, are there exemptions, um, under the section seven, I guess it's section seven, which, which, um, under the word may impose? And I would suggest that, that Jared, if you have specific, um, concerns about the list and you would like to bring forward three or four of the exemptions which we currently are enforcing for reconsideration to the city council for discussion, I think you ought to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we may agree or not, and, or maybe we'll get advice about them from legal staff or not. But, um, you know, your question originally was about, is there a way that the city can create greater transparency by basically redacting less? And if, it, it may be a case-by-case basis, but there might be a, uh, a sub, subcategory that is perhaps not totally necessary. And if you have those kinds of questions, why don't you bring it forward to us for conversation? Then we could actually talk about a very specific thing. We've talked really a lot, quite a long time now about theoretical issues.
Yeah.
If you want to bring something kind of more specific and we can maybe say yes or no on, on certain requirements that the city currently enforces to great, to, to create greater transparency, well, um, you know, let's do that in the future.
FOIA discussion, part two.
Can happen. Bill Coldbrook, you seem to have some question?
Not anymore, thank you.
Okey.
Poor dude.
Charisse?
Yes?
I just want to say one last thing that this is, this is exactly the, the type of debates and conversations that we should be having about these type of issues. I thank everyone for engaging with this. I don't think we can make much headway on figuring out how to, uh, deal with this issue, uh, tonight. Uh, but thank you, everyone, for, for doing so. And council members, I would greatly appreciate, uh, not obviously right now, but, you know, when you have a moment, uh, your thoughts on that critical question of private individuals deciding what is in the public, public's interest versus elected folks in, uh, position such as ourselves. Thanks, Charisse.
Okay, I just, yeah. It's nine forty-seven right now. Are there any staff reports? Oh, is it okay for me to move forward? Has everybody pretty much gotten their, their answers, their questions answered? And so on and so forth from Jim and Carol? That's a yes? I'm taking your silence as consent?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so moving on for staff reports, that's Lori?
Uh, just really quickly, a couple of things to celebrate, some staffing changes and community development that I wanted to be sure to recognize. As of last Monday, Kevin Garcia, who's been with the city for about six years now, uh, has been promoted to a new role. It's called principal planner. And in that role, he will oversee the planning division and also supervise the planners. So it basically replaces the planning manager position that I used to hold. Um, so I wanted to, uh, give a little golf clap for Kevin. And similarly with Brandon, thank you for the snap, Charisse. Uh, with Brandon Boyz's departure, Steph McMahon will be, uh, in an interim fashion overseeing the economic development division and supervising that staff. So also some, um, some snaps for, for Steph. And they're both here tonight. Um, and at least Steph will be presenting the next item, the resolution. Thank you.
Okey dokey. Okay, that's all for staff reports then? So we're moving on to the resolutions and ordinances? So did I find my agenda? Anyway, uh, we need to- Okay, um, we're doing resolutions before the ordinances, uh, uh, thanks to the, the change in the addition to the agenda. So, um, I moved that resolution number twenty twenty zero seven zero three three R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from Market at the Square, uh, Perrin Link Up Illinois Grant SNAP Double Value Program twenty twenty. Can I get a motion on that? Or I guess I move forward?
You want to present a-
Do you have a presentation by staff on it?
Oh, yes, okay, I didn't, I didn't know that, I'm sorry, Steph.
That's okay, it won't be long. I'm just, I'm bringing to you this four thousand dollar grant. It's a link-up grant for us to, um, double the SNAP benefits that are, um, that our patrons at Market in the Square receive. And this is a grant we have received over the last nine years off and on. And, um, so it really helps with those benefits in the market. So, um, staff is recommending that you approve this resolution tonight.
Okay, can I get a motion on the resolution?
Charisse, can I ask some questions?
Oh, yes, I thought we'd move it and then discuss, but go ahead, yeah.
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions to staff. So, um, with, with the changes in the farmer's market, I'm wondering if you have any update in terms of where that fund for the SNAP double benefit stands? How, how we're doing in terms of, um, people to, uh, using that? And how much money we have left if we agree to accept the $4,000?
Um, I don't have that information in front of me. I can definitely get it for you and respond to you. We also received a grant from the Illinois Farm Credit, which I'll be bringing that to you also. So would it be okay to bring you that information when I bring that grant?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that would be totally fine. I'm just wondering, um, I, I know usually we have money that rolls over, and I would like for us to be able to publicize these, uh, these funds broader if possible. I know that, um, right now, I think that there's a table at the farmer's market where people can walk up and find out. But it would be great if we had some other ways that we could publicize it to the, to the public, especially with food insecurity and COVID right now.
We'll see if we can get you that number before council meeting next week.
Thank you.
If we can.
Yep, yeah, great. So I'm happy to move if, Charisse, if.
Go ahead.
Let me, let me get the number here. Um, I moved that we, uh, send with a recommendation for approval, Resolution Number 2020-07-033R, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance of a Grant for Market at the Square, Link Up Illinois Grant SNAP Double Voucher Program for 2020.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Dennis. Um, any discussion regarding this? Okay, let's take a vote of, um, uh, voice, not a voice vote, but a eyes and gaze. Yeah. Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'd like to recognize Ordinance Number 2020-07-038, and ordinance approving an amendment to the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, Urbana Pedestrian Master Plan, Plan Case 240, uh, 01CP20. Is there anybody here to discuss that? Lilly? Nope.
Uh, actually, Gabe Lewis from Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, he's got a presentation on the pedestrian plan for you tonight.
Okay, thank you, Gabe.
Thank you, Council and Mayor, good evening. I'm going to share my screen. All right, hopefully everyone can see Urbana Pedestrian Master Plan presentation. All right, so the document, um, is, consists of seven chapters as well as seven appendices. And I'm going to go through, um, what we have. In the introduction, we talk about the local framework, um, defining walkability and accessibility, and how this study relates to council goals, not only when this project started, but also the current council goals. And then the map on the right shows the study area that includes everything within Urbana city limits, as well as, um, the immediate surrounding areas. And the, um, Greater Urbana area was broken into eight, um, sections, eight neighborhoods. The main goals and objectives of this plan are accessibility and connectivity, equity, safety, and vibrancy. So we want to improve, uh, walking in the pedestrian environment in these ways in Urbana. We have a lot of information in the plan on existing conditions, um, that's broken up into what we call demand. Within that, there's information on demographics, um, the density, population density, age groups, race and ethnicity, population with disabilities, and low-income populations. Also, information on destinations such as density, housing density, walking to transit, um, counts and crashes. And then on the supply side, we have information on existing infrastructure and who owns it, um, the walking environment, like the physical condition and conditions that deter walking, and analyses, um, like safe walking routes to school and the pedestrian level of traffic stress, which is something that evaluates each block on a one-to-four scale of if it's comfortable or not. Uh, there's a chapter describing all of the infrastructure types. And, um, a lot of the information we are using in this plan comes from, um, so COATs is the Transportation Program of RPC. And we have a sidewalk network and inventory and assessment, um, project that we started a few years ago. And there's now, um, a website devoted to that information. And we update that annually, um, with information that we get from the cities about new facilities. So within that, we look at sidewalks, curb ramps, pedestrian signals, and marked crosswalks. So we have information about that here in, um, existing conditions, infrastructure type, and then the recommendations. Um, we also talk about different trail types and other facilities like lights and signage. For this plan, we did two rounds of public input, and the first round was very extensive. We were at 10 public events, um, and did outreach. There was a survey and comment card. We asked people where they walk and where they have issues. So we had participation from over 100 people. Um, and then the second public, or the second round of input, we had a meeting with, uh, 31 people, and we asked them to prioritize the recommendations in front of them, um, not only on the engineering side, but also the non, the non-engineering or non-infrastructure side. So to get into the recommendations, just to explain how it's broken up, broken down. Um, first of all, that sidewalk inventory project, um, for each block or each feature, those four pedestrian features I mentioned, the, it gets a score of zero to 100. So everything that is 90, above 90, um, is considered, um, in very good shape, no need for any improvements. And then in this document, everything that has, every feature with a score of 90 or less is considered a recommendation. So that's still a lot of recommendations throughout the entire city for all of these sidewalk, um, blocks and curb ramps, et cetera. Within that, um, we developed prioritization criteria, and that helped us to break all the recommendations into five categories, which on the next slide, it mentions the five categories are just called highest, high, medium, low, and lowest. So the criteria include, from the network, um, assessment, there was a sidewalk gap analysis, um, missing sidewalk connectivity values, and for existing sidewalks, their compliance score. Um, we looked, or we included equity data, that was another criteria. We looked at zero-vehicle households, um, income below poverty level, limited English proficiency, and race and ethnicity. And then within the sidewalk inventory, there are a couple of priority areas, downtown Urbana and the Philo, Florida area. So if a feature was within one of those areas, it got a little higher score as a recommendation. And then from the two rounds of public input, and then also the Bicycle Master Plan, which has the same recommendation as the Park District Trails Plan, and includes things like side paths, shared-use paths, um, that are also used by pedestrians. And then we have, um, a lot of information from the Safe Routes to School events and efforts. There are surveys that are done every year. So we took, um, where people marked if there was a, an issue on their route as, as, um, part of this criteria. So as I mentioned, then, everything is broken into five categories. And it's then also broken down into, um, seven infrastructure types. Because within sidewalks, you have places where, um, meddling needs to take place. That's where you're evening a vertical fault. Some places are sidewalk gaps where there's no sidewalk in between two existing sidewalks. And then the third category, there are trail projects where you have a wider sidewalk essentially. Then we have curb ramps, crosswalks. We've identified a few locations for the city to look at crossing enhancements. Um, the issue with this is that, um, we do have guidelines for the community, but you need pedestrian count data. We do have that data for certain locations, but not every single intersection. So, um, we couldn't make recommendations based on looking at every single intersection for this category. And then finally, pedestrian signals. So there are also other categories. We have five recommendations for development, 11 for maintenance, four for streetscape, and then a lot more for programs, um, 17 for education, 27 for encouragement, six for enforcement, 14 for evaluation, and then three policy recommendations. Finally, there were cost estimates assigned for the highest priority recommendations. They are definitely estimates. Um, and then we've identified a number of types of funding sources that can be, um, used or looked at for ways to implement, um, projects. And then the final steps or next steps are having the city staff implementation involve establishing an interdepartmental pedestrian bicycle coordination team, um, investing in a pedestrian and bicycle coordinator, and then supporting efforts to create a pedestrian advocacy group. That's, uh, my presentation on the pedestrian plan. And I'm happy to take any comments or questions you might have.
Mary Alice?
Um, first of all, I, I'd like to say thank you. This is a huge undertaking, and, um, you really provide a, a really good service to our entire community in terms of doing the sidewalk inventory, gathering public input. Um, I, I just have a couple of small questions. My, my first one is, is that on that funding slide, you, you said sidewalk mileage is a possible funding source? I was wondering if you could expand on that?
It's actually mileage, and it's just, um, it's a type of funding source where, let me look it up to make sure I'm not giving you the wrong information. Um, it's a, it's something that local governments can do, um, to raise funding. It's a special property tax designated for a particular purpose. So, um, Ann Arbor, Michigan, has done this. We've profiled certain communities for some of these funding sources that have used these mechanisms. It also says property owners are charged based on the assessed value of their property, um, increasing their overall tax liability.
So it'd be an increase in property tax within the community, it sounds like. Um, and then it was, it was a very long document, and I think I missed, I think I missed the estimated cost to.
So that, there's not one estimated cost for all of the improvements um, within the implementation set, chapter, chapter seven. After each of those seven categories, there is an estimated cost for those, um, categories. The, it, it can be very high for certain types of projects. Um, what we did is took, uh, three of the highest-scoring projects in those eight zones as highest, as the basis for the highest, um, priority recommendations. And the sidewalk gaps are, um, can be much longer in, in outlying areas or, you know, not in the core. So that can increase the cost, but it's not something that we're saying that entire section would be done at once, or, you know, um, at all. The, the, maybe what's most helpful to you, there are cost estimates at the beginning of that section. And so replacing or building concrete sidewalk is $25 a square foot. A curb ramp is $42 per square foot. A standard crosswalk is $770. A continental or high-visibility crosswalk is about $2,500. Um, and then a pedestrian signal is almost $1,500.
So, so one of the things that struck me, there's a lot of different maps, um, with, with a lot of different information, uh, for, for people who haven't seen it. Um, I'm just wondering where, where they would be able to find the, the whole document? I know we had a link in, in the actual, like, it's kind of buried, I guess, is what I'm saying. So you, you have to go through all the city documents for this meeting and find it. So where would, where would the public be able to view this?
I would ask if the city staff can post that on their website. Um, we don't have it posted on ours at the moment, just it's been shared. It's been going under review with the commission. So, um, if that's something that can be posted on the city website, then we could get, yeah, Lilly, if you want to.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so we generally post a lot, the plan, just like the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan. We post them on the website. And, um, you know, and I'll throw this back at Gabe. Oftentimes, when the pan, plan is approved, it will show up on, on CCRPC's website as well under plans that, that have been approved. Um, but currently, it's a draft plan, um, you know, pending the conversation we have tonight.
So, um, it, it would, I think it would be helpful if that exact plan was posted on the, um, the meeting agenda, like on that page, like we've done with other documents in the past, just so people have an easy way to find it, without going through the PDFs and then going to the link within the PDF. So I'd just like to ask staff to add that to tonight's agenda materials. Um, and then I, I'm going to hold off my comments about the, the brick sidewalks because I know that Dennis wants to talk about that. But just so I understand what we're being asked to discuss and potentially, uh, approve is that, that huge document, um, that talks about the, uh, priorities in terms of what should be fixed, um, what should be updated, what should be new, and so forth. I just wanted to confirm with staff that that's what we're being asked to do right now. Lilly, maybe you can answer me?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so, um, tonight is just about the Urbana Pedestrian Master Plan. There's no, uh, policy change or city code change that, um, is before you. There would be, have to be an ordinance or a resolution. Um, this is really to incorporate the pedestrian plan into the 2005 Comprehensive Plan. Um, it's very helpful for, um, certain kinds of ways that we get funding for infrastructure to show that we have public input for the kinds of infrastructure projects that we, uh, apply for grants for.
So the, the, the discussion about the brick sidewalks is not something that's included in this plan?
So it is a recommendation in the, um, in the Recommendations Chapter, which is chapter six.
Okay.
Um, there's many different engineering recommendations, but there are also policy recommendations. You can see, um, at the bottom of the slide that Gabe is sharing right now, it says next steps. Um, there's pedestrian bicycle coordinator for one, um, a pedestrian advocacy group, um, and supporting efforts. There's numerous events, one of which is a recommendation based off of public input to consider changing a portion of the brick sidewalk reconstruction policy. And so that's one of the projects, and you can see that on, uh, page 124.
All right, okay, thank you.
Um, Lilly, I have a question too. Is this, is this, um, I don't know, Mary Alice, do I have to give you the chair or something to ask a question?
I don't think for staff questions, only discussion.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to know if, um, is all of this going, are, are we in the process of making up a new comprehensive plan right now? I'm, or am I getting that confused with something else?
No, we are. We're just starting the process of, um, a comprehensive plan.
So my question is that, is would, would this particular ordinance be, um, part of the new comprehensive plan? And it, it sounds like we're just revamping the 2005 plan. Is it going to be part of the new, the new plan?
So the new plan will have a, a large discussion with a lot of public input, and this can be a part of that discussion piece. The, um, old plan that we're just starting to revamp is something that's probably going to take a certain amount of time to do. But meanwhile, staff is, still wants to take this public input in the plan and prioritize resources for, um, the CIP, for instance, or projects to apply for grants.
Okay. Um, Dennis, did you want to? Dennis, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I do, please. Okay, so this is a, you know, a very comprehensive plan, very thoughtfully thought out. I appreciate that. You know, I hadn't really tracked the details of BPAC as it produced the plan. Understanding that was mainly dealing with certain kinds of infrastructure relating to safety and signaling and crosswalks and safety routes to school kind of things. So I wasn't aware that staff and RPC was specifically recommending a change in the, the brick sidewalk ordinance that was passed in 2002 until just before the second planning commission meeting, when Neighbors and I talked about it and I felt that I needed to make a comment about it. I did attend by Zoom the planning commission meeting where this draft is being proposed or had been proposed. And my concern is of course with the comments and the recommendation in the staff memo that outlines a change in the ordinance concerning the default for brick sidewalk repair to be first recommended to be switched over to cement. So during the presentation of the plan commission, it became apparent that the plan commission was very wishy-washy about how to recommend or deal with this question. Not only did individual members of the plan commission bring up the fact that they actually liked brick sidewalks and had them in front of their house and that it was one of the reasons why they actually decided to live in the East Urbana neighborhood, which I live in, the Huna neighborhood, historic East Urbana neighborhood. You know, but also that, that it was, they were wondering about how they could make any kind of change at all in this master plan, even though it's a draft. It seemed to me that, that the draft was being presented to the plan commission for input, not necessarily just to rubber stamp the plan, but to actually be thoughtful in consideration of its recommendations. But the plan commissioners didn't feel that they had the authority to make any kind of recommendation change because there was a process of public input up until that time. So that kind of disregards the whole idea of bringing forward public input to the plan commission during its review, as if public input now was not valid or valued. So my concern is this, that yes, there of course are issues with the brick sidewalks, although the city has actually invested a rather a large amount of money in relaying brick sidewalks in both East and West Urbana in a period of perhaps like a more fruitful funding back about eight, well, maybe from eight to six years ago. And, you know, certain lengths of entire blocks in some instances of Oregon, Nevada, you know, Illinois Street. And as I walk through my neighborhood, I see the successful result of relaying the brick sidewalks, which had been damaged, slumping, or otherwise problematic. Most recently, when a water main was being installed during reconstruction of the city water system, well, it's not really owned by the city, on Anderson Street. And the water main ran under the sidewalk and so the sidewalk had to be pulled up. The property owner was advised by staff to just put in some cement. But advocates, including Alice Engel Pretzen, who spoke earlier today, and other members of the Huna neighborhood approached the property owner. Now, I didn't have anything to do with this, but they went and approached the property owner and convinced the individual to reconsider that. And they indicated that, yeah, they actually have preferred or they actually valued the brick sidewalks. And so the sidewalk for its length between Green Street and High Street on Anderson on the west side was relayed by the, by that preference in brick at the expense of the water company because they were doing the work. And while they didn't relay the brick in a herringbone pattern, which is the more traditional historic pattern found in most of our city streets, they did an excellent job and that pathway now is totally walkable. So my point is that if you want to retain the brick sidewalks, if you value them for their aesthetic quality, their historic, their historic sense of place that they create in certain neighborhoods that are not going to be replaced or achieved in the more modern sections of the city that are always, that are already cement sidewalks by ordinance or by preference during their construction period. You know, we only have certain lengths of sidewalk here that even have protection. So if it's possible to see that you can relay those bricks and make the service completely accessible and walkable, has been attested to by several of the comments that some of the members of Huna have, have sent to me and I forwarded to the city council earlier today for you to read. It concerns me that we're going to want to talk. The recommendation coming from BPAC is that, that by default, the staff should be encouraging them to take out the brick and replace it with cement. That decision is basically just a cheap financial solution. And it is questionable whether brick side, whether cement slab sidewalks are actually more conducive to safety than brick in that we've had people in our neighborhood, including myself, while jogging on cement sidewalks, were tripped up by shifted slabs of cement, which were no longer in alignment, but were raised up a half, a quarter inch, three quarters of an inch. They create a stumbling, a stumbling threat to safety just as much as any brick sidewalk will. So there may be more need for, for repair and maintenance of the brick sidewalks, but the reason mostly is that maintenance has sort of stopped and has never been really thoroughly finished in either the West Urbana or East Urbana neighborhoods. Now, I'm talking about East Urbana, but I know that West Urbana people value their sidewalks, the brick sidewalks, mostly for their historic value. So the other aspect of this is that if these, that we have here two separate focal points of attention in discussing brick sidewalks and in their retention. One is from BPAC, which is mostly, you know, transportation and modal resource and commission in the community. And, you know, they do great work, you know, and most of their attention has been on creating bike lanes and, you know, raising the standard of the, you know, the, the anti, you know, the bicycle, you know, the bicycle transportation qualities of the community to gold standard, which is great. And very, and so in a way, I'm very enthused about having, finally having a pedestrian master plan because I think it's been long overdue. But the other group that has not been really brought into this discussion is anybody who's interested in historic preservation of the community and its built environment. This, you know, has not gone, you know, this is not, the Huna neighborhood is not involved in particular in consultation as a group that I can recall. And I doubt that the West Urbana neighborhood was associated, association was, was brought in to have discussion about brick sidewalks replacement in particular. And I'm certainly sure that the Historic Preservation Commission has not been consulted about what their opinion would be on this. Because this is true, I recommend that we just eliminate at this point the one paragraph that recommends that the replacement default be from brick sidewalk to cement because I think that conversation hasn't really been justly enumerated and fully explored in the community and what its values are. And you will say that this plan, when it's adopted, it's going to be a great plan. Y'all know that, that it will not truly affect the future comprehensive plan. But I will say that it will be referred to with authority that, one, the plan commission, which was dubious about what it could possibly do to change, to amend it, because actually some people considered amending this particular aspect of this plan, the brick sidewalk aspect. That the planning commission will be quoted as having approved the plan, including the brick sidewalk recommendation as unanimous. And then if we also are going to be passing it next week containing this default replacement, it will be said that you also, the city council unanimously, unanimously, or maybe it's not going to be unanimous, voted to enforce or to approve the concept of automatic replacement during repair work, brick, brick to cement as a recommended mode of repair to the property owner. So staff is going to be actually recommending using this plan to change those parameters. And I just disagree. I think that this needs to be discussed differently, that the historic ability, I mean, the historic importance of the brick sidewalks in my neighborhood. I have two of them, one on the side of my house and one in my front of my house. And I certainly know, you know, what it's like to shovel them, to weed them, or not to weed them, or whatever. Is, you know, it's a very doable thing. It's, I don't feel it's dangerous. It supports the sustainability goals of the community because it's a permeable sidewalk rather than a slab, which is an impermeable, rain pouring off sidewalk. As I well stated, but that's what it is. And that, that the issue is really deeper and has a lot more, a lot more effect on people's sense of quality of their environment in historic neighborhoods than just the convenience of making cement the go-to process. And really, it's all about also the city's commitment to maintain all sidewalks in Urbana, which have to include brick sidewalks. And yes, it's more important, it's more financially expensive to relay brick. But here we have BPAC and the Regional Planning Commission, who are experts at seeking funding to achieve infrastructure repair and improvement. And why can't we rely upon them to find the needed funding when the time comes for these projects as well as others? So I'm going to recommend that we either divide and divide out the paragraphs recommending that change or wait and have a conversation about this, remove that whole question for another day, maybe when we discuss the comprehensive plan of 2020, 2021.
Dennis, can I, I just want to interject real quick because it's going, it's almost 10:25 and I think we need to extend the meeting. Do we need to take a vote to extend the meeting?
I think we do, probably.
Okay, does anybody have a motion?
I'll move to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
Okay.
And I don't want to make a big deal out of this because it's truly just one paragraph, but.
Yeah, can we second this first?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So Jared, you moved to 11 o'clock. Mary Lou, I'm Mary Lou, Mary Alice, you seconded it?
Ma'am.
Okay, can I get a vote, please? Phyllis, can you do a roll vote, please? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dennis, I'm sorry, continue.
No, I've said, I think I've made my case. I'll also say that as a compromise to the planning department, when Green Street was repaved, the planning department wanted to remove the brick sidewalks on both sides of the street. In my neighborhood, association said, well, we're willing to understand that it's important to have accessible, wheelchair accessible pathway from, I must say, downtown Vine Street to Victory Park, which is probably one of the interesting goals in my neighborhood. And so we agreed that sections, and there were like about a block and a half altogether, of brick sidewalk be removed from the north side of Green Street and replaced by cement. And the agreement was that we would then preserve and try to repair the sidewalks on the south side of Green Street that are brick. And no repair was ever done to those brick sidewalks. There could have been, but very little was done. But we still do have the brick. And we, so we already bargained away rather a large section of brick in my neighborhood to the planning commission and the public works department. And we feel that there needs to be an honor to support the brick sidewalks if these are the preferences of the property owners and not to be encouraged to default to brick, to default to cement. All right, so we have a vested interest. Not everybody in my community agrees with me, but those people who have an interest in historic preservation, and there are rather a lot of them in my neighborhood because of the name of our neighborhood association is the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association. Just want to say, I'm trying to represent my constituency.
Okay, Carol?
Perhaps Lilly has something she wants to say in response, but what I wanted to share is that it's, you don't have to endorse a change in the policy to endorse a conversation about a change in the policy. And I think that one of the merits that has emerged from the different voices of people that have chosen to weigh in on this is that, you know, the maintenance issue about brick sidewalks is real and it's not going to change. So at least not anytime soon. So I think, you know, while people might, you know, place a lot of value on the aesthetics of it, even people who voiced that, even some of the people who voiced that aesthetic preference recognize the reality of the safety issues and so forth. And so I think that, you know, as I said, you don't have to endorse a change in the policy to endorse a conversation about a change in the policy. And I think there's some real conversation that needs to take place around preserving brick sidewalks in light of our ability to maintain them. That, because that's a real problem for us.
It should not be a larger problem than maintaining cement sidewalks. And the cement sidewalks need to be maintained as well.
It's twice as expensive to maintain brick sidewalks as it is to maintain concrete.
And there are ways of getting grant funding to assist that. And I think that the city has a responsibility to pursue it.
Okay, Mary, Mary Alice, I'm going to do Lilly first and then you.
Well, I just can clarify a couple of things. The recommendation isn't to change the policy, it's to consider changing the policy, which really gets at the heart of what you were kind of, some of the things you mentioned, which was this needs to be a much larger conversation with historic preservation being consulted, neighborhood associations to be consulted. So if staff did pursue this recommendation change, and there are a lot of recommendation, recommended changes to pursue. It's kind of a very lofty plan. If staff did, it would be a very large conversation where many voices need to be consulted to make such a change and city council would have the ultimate say in making that change. I just wanted to kind of clarify that a little bit. We tried to kind of include that in the staff report, but it's kind of buried in a chunk of stuff, so. of stuff, so.
Now, I want to say that I agree with Dennis, in that typically when we approve these types of plans, and then we move forward with other projects, then we will have reference to those approved plans. And I feel like, you know, I've talked a lot about the Comprehensive Plan, and it's out of date-ness, and I'm really happy that the city is now moving forward with updating that. But anytime we have something that comes through from the Planning Commission, it's always referenced in terms of how does this meet the Comprehensive Plan? So I guess my basic question is, is the question to us today as City Council, to wholly accept the pedestrian plan, or do we have the ability to do as Dennis suggested, which is to remove a section?
It is only a draft.
Anybody? Lily, Carol, oh, Lori!
Well, certainly, yes. So, yes, it is only a draft. And I don't know if, Gabe, you touched very much on the amount of public input and engagement that you, that was attempted to get to where we are in this plan. So I think it's important to recognize that there have been some voices heard to date on this issue, and I believe the voices were very loud about the sidewalk issue. And so personally, I think it'd be a shame to dismiss that and not have the larger conversation to, as Carol said, sort of balance, to have everyone in the room, so to speak, to have that discussion in the future. So I do think it'd be a shame to discount all of that, the public input that we've heard to date, specifically about the sidewalk.
So would it be possible for us to recommend changing the language so that it reflects more of the nature that there would be a larger public conversation in terms of the priorities of cement versus brick? Could we tweak that language a little bit to make that very clear, that that conversation needs to be had, that explicit conversation needs to be had in that document?
Sure, I think there is some reference there, so maybe those that are more familiar with the specific language could think about a way to make that more specific, sure.
Yeah.
So Dennis, would you be satisfied tonight regarding this topic if we either tabled it or amended it? Because...
Well, we won't be voting on it tonight anyway, because we're in the committee of the whole.
No, I know we're not voting on it, but I mean, for us to talk about it in another committee of the whole meeting or something like that, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, maybe. I mean, I wouldn't be able to support it as written today. And I would like to see some, or maybe offer some additional language. But right now, the language is that it's recommended. It's recommended, that's a definite statement, that the staff and the plan recommends that there be this change. And I'm just not really, I mean, yeah, it might be recommended that we discuss it, but basically the gist is that there's support to completely change the brick sidewalk ordinance, which was passed in 2002 by unanimous vote of the City Council at that time. So yeah, I'm, you know, I mean, I would like to see or offer change in the language, and probably would like to get some input from Mary Alice or somebody else who would like to support that.
Jared?
Oh, we could, Dennis, offer to send it, the draft, to council with no recommendation, pending that language.
Sure, why not? That's fair. I mean, I totally understand the value of the fact that there's been significant public conversation, and we do have now a rather extensive survey of the condition of our sidewalks. But I'm saying that if the brick sidewalks are pulled because they're uneven, the city is obligated to correct that. I don't care if it's expensive or not. If it's a safety issue, I mean, why do we repair streets? Because people talk about potholes. Well, our brick sidewalks have their own potholes. Let's give them the same value for pedestrians as we give to automobiles to repair pothole streets.
Sure, can I make a motion?
You surely may, Jared.
I'll move that we send, ordinance number 2020-07-038, an ordinance approving an amendment to the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, having to do with the Urbana Pedestrian Master Plan that came from Plan Case 2401-CP-20, be sent to the full council with no recommendation.
Now, is that an amendment that we're making to this?
Just sending it forward as a motion with no recommendation.
Recommendation, anybody want to second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it has been moved by Jared and seconded by Mary Alice. Can we get a roll vote, please, Ms. Clark? Oh, it's a discussion, my bad, discussion?
I'm ready to vote.
Everybody ready to vote? Okay, Ms. Clark?
I do have one question, I guess.
Okay.
So Dennis, is your plan to propose different language at the next City Council? I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Sure, yeah, I'd like to expand it so that we don't have a black and white recommendation specifically in this plan that we're proposing to pass.
Lori?
Can I just ask, could you work with Gabe and Lily on the specifics on that to help weave that in better, rather than just having us need to react to it?
Certainly, we would be happy to do that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
We would actually seek the support of RPC and our own planning division.
Okay, are we ready to take a roll vote? All right, Phil, Ms. Clark?
Okay, this is going to council without a recommendation, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Okay, so...
I appreciate all your patience, thank you very much.
Oh, no problem. Our next thing on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-07-039, an ordinance approving an amendment to the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, Urbana Bicycle Wayfinding Plan, Plan Case Is there anyone here to give information regarding this? Gabe? Okay.
I don't know if city staff wants to say anything before I start, but I have a presentation.
Gabe would like to present.
Thank you, Lily. Let me share my screen. Okay, hopefully you can all see Urbana Bike Wayfinding Plan. This is another project we've been working with city staff and steering committee on. This document has six chapters, which include an introduction, we've looked at pure areas that have bikeway finding signs, existing signs and destinations in Urbana, public input, sign designs and placement, and implementation. So within the introduction, this plan actually came about because it was a major recommendation of the bicycle master plan to install bike way and trail wayfinding signs to supplement existing and proposed bike routes in Urbana and trail signs. The purpose of this plan is to facilitate bike navigation to riders' destinations while conveying the community's identity and encouraging people to ride. We relate this again to the policy framework of council goals, and the study area is the same as the pedestrian plan, with, including everything within city limits and slightly outside. As I mentioned, there was a steering committee, which included representatives from the university, the park district, and the Champaign County bikes. And then we talk about wayfinding benefits a bit, which you may, I'm sure, hopefully you're aware, you've seen bike route signs in town. The idea of this plan is to expand on that, so that there are signs with destination, distance, and direction information. And having that information enhances the bike network, because in many streets, you know, where we do have bike route signs, they're fine as is for riding, they're low-volume, low-traffic streets, you know, shade and whatnot. But having the information about destinations and where, how close things can be, can encourage people to ride when they realize that it is actually really close. And it also makes drivers aware of bicyclists being on a particular street. The principles of bike wayfinding are to connect places, promote active travel, maintain motion, be predictable, keep information simple, and make signage accessible. So while we do have a lot of information in this plan, and I'm sure many of us want to include a lot of information on signs, we want it to be concise enough that the rider can see it and keep riding and get to their destination efficiently. Finally, there's the concept of the Urbana Green Loop, for those not aware. This was a concept developed in the bike master plan of connecting all of the parks in the community, and through trails and bike lanes and bike routes. And so some of those segments have to be bike routes, because there isn't space for a trail, and so signage would help people stay on a route. For the pure area comparisons, we looked at not only Urbana and Champaign County, but five different areas that have plans. That includes Dane County, Wisconsin, where Madison is, Fort Collins, Colorado, Peoria, Illinois, Tompkins County, and Finger Lakes, New York, and Wichita, Kansas. And we looked at another 20 or so cities that have either signs or plans. We looked at things like the population, and if it's a bike from the community, again, if they have a plan, bicycle from the university, things like that. And then we did an inventory, you'll see on the map, of the existing bike route signs in Urbana. Then there's information on bike destinations that are proposed. And the first recommendation regards the name, where a route follows a particular street more than 50% of its route, or the Boneyard Creek, then it's proposed to name it after that route, so Washington Bike Way, Main Bike Way, et cetera. I alluded to having a lot of information on signs, or not trying to have that. There are standard abbreviations for a lot of terms, and the typical character limit for a single word is 14, and for a phrase is 19. So we do have information on what the destination, how they might read, that will help Public Works when they get to implementing this plan. There are three levels of destinations that we've gotten from these other best practice plans. That's primary, your longest distance, larger destinations, other cities, downtown Urbana, University of Illinois, large signature parks. On the secondary level, our community-level destinations, like shopping, medium-sized parks, medical facilities. And then everything else is in the tertiary category, neighborhood level, neighborhood bikeways, employers, schools, that don't serve the whole community but just the neighborhood, and university destinations. So we did have a public meeting in conjunction with the head plan, again, 31, and people attended, and presented design ideas, and had people vote on them. This is also available online. We presented these signs for on-street and off-street trails in the University of Illinois. And then that corridor naming, we asked for input on how people might want to name the bikeways, but what we found, the results were that people wanted it just identified by the major street name or the major feature. And that resulted in nine east-west corridors and five north-south corridors that are the Level 1, 2, 3 corridors for implementation. So Chapter 5, we talk about bikeway designations and the naming, which I've touched on. The three major sign types are decision, turn, and confirmation. And we have designs for on-street and off-street. We also developed signs for other jurisdictions that were part of the steering committee, like the university, Carl, MTD, the park district. And that mainly involves having that topper that's on the right side of the off-street signs there. So you have the City of Urbana topper, but for a different jurisdiction, that can be exchanged for their own logo. And essentially, the design sign is, or decision sign, is where two bikeways intersect, and it tells you what is ahead and what's to your left or right, in terms of destination, distance, and direction. The turn sign can be used for small changes in the route, maybe you have to, you have a turn every block for a couple blocks. And then confirmation signs are after you make the turn. The top sign shows the name of the bike way, and on the bottom, that confirmation sign is placed at the beginning of the bike way. So Washington Street area, as you're leaving campus, you'll get those destinations that are on the route. We have information on sign placement and assembly. And then also, like the pedestrian plan, there was prioritization criteria, which includes route readiness, if it's existing or planned, the proximity to destinations, bicycle level of stress, the same equity measures, public input, and then gap closure, how long the gap is in terms of helping prioritize these routes. And then you can see in the red are the Priority 1 routes, which is Main, Washington, Race, Anderson, and Windsor. Priority 2 is Broadway, Philo, Green, Goodwin, and Pennsylvania. Priority 3 is the Boneyard Creek Corridor, Florida Avenue, Illinois Street, and the Kikapu Rail Trail Corridor. And then Priority 4 would be everything else that's recommended as a bike route or facility in the bike master plan. Finally, for implementation, it's, these sign types, we estimated how many signs might be placed on each of these priority bikeways, and it does add up to be a lot, it's about 700 for the Priority 1 through 3, and even more when you consider everything else. But once again, we've identified some funding sources that could be used beyond just city bike master implementation funds. All right, that is my presentation, happy to answer any comments or questions.
Yeah, did you call on me?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, thanks, Gabe. Well, I'm always impressed by how thorough the biking community is able to pull together resources to create what has become a gold standard bike trail community of Urbana. And you just said that you already have, what, located funding to cover some of the expenses of the signage, and that there would be maybe potentially 700 signs, is that correct?
I might let Shannon speak to that, I know she's on the call, I don't want to. We identified funding sources, it's, some of it is kind of like grants that can be applied for.
All right, so actually, you've done some research, and you will be able to locate and, and probably, you're likely to achieve some funding from certain sources, is that correct?
I'm gonna let Shannon speak.
Hi, Shannon's here. We do have some funding that Craig Schoncoiler had accrued during his time with the city. It's not sufficient to cover the entire network, so, and with Gabe's funding sources, it's not like those are immediately available, you would have to apply for them. A lot of them require applications, putting together a packet, so we don't have any of that ready currently, since we've been waiting to get the plan before City Council, so.
Right, and it just occurs to me that you could use the same techniques to secure funding for brick sidewalks in the future?
Possibly, I'd have to look into it, I'm new to the whole sidewalk situation that was in Brad Bennett's court, so between me and Justin, it's something we do have on our radar, but not immediately.
And so I'd like to ask Lily. About eight years ago, the City Council approved a rather extensive wayfinding signage program for automobiles to locate the key areas of the downtown as they were traveling through and approaching the center of our city. How are we doing on searching for funding for those signs?
I don't have an answer for you. And I think I would have to consult economic development within community development and do a little bit of research to provide that.
I know that the city council, through hiring consultants, after doing an extensive traffic and parking study for the downtown, has now designed signs and signage program to highlight and bring business into the downtown and travelers and to make the downtown a destination. We were able to achieve the first step, which was basically marking some of the parking areas, the parking lots in the downtown, so people could locate them. One of the larger signs erected was actually on the parking garage. And I guess that's been up for maybe like six or eight years by now. So how is the city going to balance completing its automobile finding signage program that was adopted eight years ago and the bicycle master plan document that we're watching tonight?
So I'll take a shot at that one. The money that that Shannon was referencing is money that is in a project for bike lanes and side paths, and it's roughly $188,000. Now, I would, before people start spending that money in their minds, I think there is a conversation that needs to be had, starting with BPAC. You know, we've heard a lot about Vision Zero, and we certainly wayfinding is is part of that, but there may actually be higher priorities for that money before we just automatically assume that we're going to spend it on wayfinding because that's what we said we were going to do. You know, we have to, we have to reconsider things as as priorities change. And I would say that the other signage, the downtown signage, is in that same realm. We don't have any funding identified for that, but it it gets weighed against all the other priorities that we talked about with the CIP.
Yeah, it's really, it is kind of an unfortunate experience that we have in our community that we come up with really excellent plans as we try to solve the problems and increase business in the community. And yet, we don't fund the plan to actually achieve it. And we have a lot of plans on the drawing boards, and some of them are, I mean, we had, once we had a a re-landscaping and reconsidering the Cunningham Avenue corridor plan for beautification, which never went anywhere after it was drafted. And it's been on the, it's been on the on the shelf for 18 years, probably. So yeah, I guess our, I guess if the community had better funding, or if we were a richer community, we would be able to see progress on some of these things. And I appreciate that that priorities do change over the years. But we have had so many goals, which if we could only have achieved them, we would see a transformation in our downtown. And I think that the bike, the biking community contributes to that. And yet, on some aspects, it seems like, like putting up bike signs is not as significant in some respects as some of the other goals that could be achieved on the whole. Now, I'm not going to not support this plan, but I'm just pointing out that as we pile up priorities, we really ought to be thinking about what are the plans that we've drafted and actually already approved and paid for, which are going to be the most useful in the community to achieve whatever the goals are that the new comprehensive plan envisions. So I think it's just like a really important thing for our discussion point. And I like the signage. I think it makes complete sense. I realize that the biking community is a smart and great advocacy group. But in perspective, I just am concerned a little bit that we are well, you know, is the, you know, it's like the tail's wagging the dog sometimes, that maybe, you know, for economic development of the downtown, other priorities really are, should be looked at more carefully. But I love planning, and I love to see the enthusiasm and the creativity that these plans produce. And I know that there's a community out there that's very excited about it. So I'm just like, just observing. And I'm not necessarily a an urban planner, but I have a good sense of what makes a downtown exciting and interesting to people. And I'm still waiting for that golden moment to arrive in Urbana.
And Diane?
Couple of things. One is we've got four minutes before the 11 o'clock deadline, so you'll need to vote to extend a little bit more. And I would remind everybody, we, given our situation with COVID, our priorities are being changed for us, at least for this year. And our top priority this year is to survive and help our downtown survive so that we can thrive in the future. So so that has to be part of the discussion, too. Not tonight, but but it's, it's the overall reality of today.
I'll make a motion, Sharice, to extend the minute, or the meeting for 10 minutes to 11:10.
Any, any seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Jared and seconded by Bill Colebrook for us to extend the meeting for another 10 minutes. Ms. Clark, would you take the role, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and I'm sorry, fellas.
Me too.
Well, we still have the the last discussion item, too, to get to. Are there any motions to regarding this resolution? Anybody?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay, Mary Alice?
I move that we send ordinance number 2020-07-039, ordinance approving an amendment to the 2025, sorry, 2005 comprehensive plan for the Urbana bicycle wayfaring plan, Plan Case 2402-CP-20, to city council with the recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Jared. Ms. Clark, would you please take the role?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay. And let's see. Our last agenda item is our safety and safety policing plan. Does anyone want to open that discussion?
Sharice?
Yes.
I have a proposal. We have a couple of options here. Given the lightness of the hour, I don't think anyone's in a condition to have a really productive discussion tonight. So here's a couple of options for the council. One is this meeting could be continued till tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. If if enough people will be available to attend, we'll need a quorum at least. I know Bill Brown will not be here. Or we could put it on next week's agenda.
Is there any discussion regarding that proposal?
I will be available tomorrow night, but I would be in favor of it, putting it on next week's agenda.
Mary Alice?
I was going to say that I will be available tomorrow night, but I also worry about having as many people there as possible. So I'm, I'm willing to do either. My preference would be for tomorrow night.
Jared?
I would be fine with Monday versus tomorrow night, but I would request that we don't put it as the last thing on the agenda because this keeps happening over and over again.
Yeah, it does. And plus, if we try to do it tomorrow night, we won't have a quorum because Bill Brown won't be here either.
Well, you would, okay.
We would if four of us were there.
You just need four.
But I would, I would rather get as many people as possible.
I agree. Okay, so let's, do we need to take a vote on on the proposal to change the agenda and add the discussion to next, next week's council meeting?
No, we can, we can do that.
You can just do it.
We'll do it when we set the agenda.
Okay, so.
And I, I just wanted to say, I agree with Jared. I think it would be better if we had the discussion as the first item rather than the last item.
That's, that's fine. We just had the FOIA presentation at council's request as well, so we wanted to get that one done, so.
Yeah, and we had plenty of discussion regarding that.
Yeah, I look forward to doing it, and I, I agree. Let's, let's tackle this head on at the beginning of the meeting. I would have done it tomorrow night, but I appreciate the fact that it deserves thoughtful and as many comments and input that the rest of the city council members can point to it.
I agree.
And just a reminder, there's a CPRB meeting on Wednesday night.
Okay. Jared?
Just to say a quick thing, did everybody get my email about what that this discussion item is even about? Did everyone see that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right, that was all I wanted to know.
Okay, is there any further business that we need to attend to then? Well, then with no further business, I suppose we can adjourn this council of the whole meeting.